I'd like to call out special meeting to order. Ms. Williams, if you'll call the roll please.
Mr. Steven L. Pierce Senior.
Here.
Mr. Halby Miles Senior.
Here.
Mr. Kenneth L. Pritchett.
Here.
Mr. Les Elwyn.
Here.
Ms. Joyce Proctor. Mr. Bernard J. Lundey Junior.
Here.
Mr. Adrian T. Dance Senior.
Here.
Ms. Joyce Proctor.
Here.
Okay, Ms. Win, the motion to go into close.
I move that the school board go into close meeting to receive a report for the action, for the acting superintendent as authorized by section two point two dash three seven one one A one of the code of Virginia. The purpose of discussion and consideration of prospective candidates for employment and performance of discipline and specific employees of the school board.
You've heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miles, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, we will now enter into close.
Their mics are on.
We would need a motion to come out of close.
So move.
Second.
Miss when?
As required by section two point two. Dash three seven one two dot D of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. A roll call vote will be taken to certify that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the act. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which. The board. Prior to the vote, any member of the. Prior to the vote, any member of the board who believes that there was a departure from the requir- requirements of one and two as read shall so state the same, indicating the substance of the departure that in his or her judgment has taken place, does any member wish to respond? Hearing no response, I will now take the four-year roll call. Mr. Steven L. Pierce Senior?
Yes.
Mr. Halby Mau Senior? Mr. Kenneth L. Pritchett?
Yes.
Mr. Les Elwin?
Yes.
Ms. Joyce Proctor? Mr. Bernard J. Lundey Junior?
Yes.
Mr. Adrian T. Dance Senior?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. At this time, we do have recommendations from Dr. Foll.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The acting superintendent recommends the following. Seven central office positions to be eliminated. Seven assistant principal positions.
But you're gonna give her a list.
Seven assistant principal positions to be eliminated. One administrative transfer. Three administrators to be non-renewed. Twelve assistant or associate principals recommended for contract. And three principals recommended for contract.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pierce, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lundey, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we need a roll call?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Steven L. Pierce Senior?
Yes.
Mr. Halby Mau Senior? Mr. Kenneth L. Pritchett?
Yes.
Mr. Les Elwin?
Yes.
Ms. Joyce Proctor?
Yes.
Ms. Bernard, Mr. Bernard J. Lundey Junior?
Yes.
Mr. Adrian T. Dance Senior?
Yes.
The motion passes six to one. Thank you, Dr. Follie, congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll move next to our second recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The acting superintendent recommends all other contracted employees for employment. For the twenty-four, twenty-five academic year.
You heard the acting superintendent's recommendations, is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Lundey, is there a second? Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
That's it, right? Okay. Need a motion to adjourn from this meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Win, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We will resume at about thirty for our public hearing.
Thank you.
Don't you go home. Don't you go home.
I live right there.
I know.
You from Petersburg?
Yes.
Really?
Yes, I am.
What year did you graduate?
Two thousand and seven.
Okay. Everybody trying to age it up. You see who she graduated with?
You must be Ms. Williams?
I am, yes.
How you doing?
Good.
On my list next to the call.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I did.
That's your daughter, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, you ready? Let us know when you're ready. Okay. Good evening, everyone, at this time we would like to call our budget hearing meeting to order.
Mr. Steven L. Pierce Senior?
Here.
Mr. Ken. Mr. Les Elwin?
Here.
Ms. Joyce Proctor?
Here.
Mr. Bernard J. Lundey Junior?
Here.
Mr. Adrian T. Dance Senior?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Next, we'll move to number three, the presentation of our proposed FY twenty-five budget and capital improvement plan, Dr. Folly. It's not working. Are you all, but I'm gonna ask you all, are you okay with him presenting from here? Yeah. Y'all fine, okay, Dr. Folly, you can come on back, they said they're fine with it.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, members of the board, colleagues, and community members. So tonight, I'm going to present the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. Mr. John Wallingford, who's been working with the division for about four weeks, is our business and finance consultant. Provided this presentation in our work session a couple of nights ago, unfortunately, he's fallen ill and cannot present tonight, so I'll carry that torch. Go ahead and advance, please. So our agenda for this portion of the agenda is to go through the revenue, our expenditures recap, and then additional items for consideration include the fund balance and health insurance comparison. The legislation, there's a three percent increase for teacher salaries provided by the General Assembly in the FY twenty twenty-five budget. This equates to us locally to about one million dollars additional funding to the division. Currently, as many of you know, the General Assembly is currently at an impasse with the governor. Their special session on April seventeenth was delayed, it's been rescheduled to May thirteenth with a scheduled vote on the fifteenth. Budgets are currently based on the most recent data available from VDOE, which was in the March twenty-fifth conference report. Next slide is a shot from the, what's called the state calculator tool. So this has a formula with the local composite index and student enrollment, projected student enrollment. And you can see on the right-hand side where there's a circle, the projected ADM is four thousand ninety-eight students. And the composite index, which we'll get into in a couple of more slides, is zero point two zero seven five. So for the proposed FY twenty twenty-four compared to the proposed FY twenty-five, there's approximately a two point two million dollar increase based on this formula. Next, you can see changes in enrollment, so this is interesting in how enrollment has gone up and down over the last seven or eight years. Currently, as you can see, we're projected in twenty twenty-four for the four thousand and nineteen students, and this, of course, is what the state bases public school funding on. Next, so the local composite index determines a school division's ability to pay education costs as it relates to the SOQs with local funds. So in the twenty-two twenty-four biennium, it was point two four one zero. And in the current biennium, which is twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six, it's down to two point zero five. What that means from a funding standpoint with the formula is that the division is actually gonna, because that composite went down, that means that we're gonna receive increased funding to two point five million dollars. So it's not necessarily great for the community that that's down, but it's good for public school funding. Okay, so operating fund expense, as you can see, a comparison from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, and it's broken into federal, state, city, and other. You can see the increase compared to twenty-four to twenty-five is over five point four million dollars. So that is significant, and that's good news for us. Go ahead. So the food service, revenue food service and grant funds. So you will see the food funds compared to federal grants. So federal grants, there's a significant change in loss of federal funding due to ESSR. So ESSR funding is going away in September, and this has been for the last four years really provided school divisions across the entire country and certainly in the state of Virginia with additional funding, and it certainly has helped supported a lot of our facility projects over the last three to four years since COVID. Next. So health insurance, health insurance is kind of a moving target while we're trying to plot what it looks like in terms of projecting how much we should put towards projected health insurance funding in the budget. So it is a major cost driver. In fiscal year twenty twenty-four, it was six point one million dollars. The coverage period does not equate with the fiscal year, so the fiscal year starts July one, and the coverage period, the way we're currently set up, is October first through September thirtieth. So we're not dealing with exact figures on July one because of how this formula works. So we have to rely on our third-party consultant, or have had to, as we try to project increases in the budget with health insurance. The current projection is eleven percent. Once we get to, you know, the General Assembly formally passes the budget, we see where the city lies, that could go up or that could go down. And then depending upon what is passed, that we're still gonna have to be in a position over the next six to eight weeks to determine how much PCPS will have to pick up in health insurance. We know that our employees have had concerns, they've shared publicly with health insurance costs that are rising, and in our budget work session the other day, we had a pretty lengthy discussion about possibly pursuing an RFP to see if we can be in a position to better serve our employees with the health insurance. One option that we could also explore is the possibility of having state health, the state health plan. So that is an action item coming out of the budget work session that we, we've been planning to do that. And so we're working with our procurement specialist who may run that RFP for us and/or with Pierce Health benefits. Next. So the cost driver recap, the legislation pays for at least three percent of all employees in the raise. That's approximately four hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars per percent. And then as we're trying to book costs that we would put in to ensure that we are staying within budget, we're currently looking at a liability insurance increase of seven percent. Utilities increased at three percent, and the seven is beyond the eleven, just so we have a buffer. Non-salary costs at one percent, health insurance at eleven percent, salary increase of three percent. So to recap, and the options that were put in before the board, you can see the revenues at one percent, this is for all employee, not just teachers, all employee increase. You take the revenue and the expense, and the net is four point two million dollars. If we go with a one percent raise for all employees, and then if, as you file the chart at two percent, the net would be three point eight million, and then at three percent, the net would be at three point three nine four. So our recommendation to the finance committee and then to the board in the budget work session was to support the three percent raise for all employees, okay? If you can just step back one slide. So if I had a joke or two on a delay, I'd throw one out, but I'm too tired for that right now. Well, I'll just cover it based upon my printout here. So just to recap, so some moving targets. We're still waiting to see if there's gonna be an increase from the city and what the city provides. The General Assembly still has to vote on a formal budget. Insurance rates could go up and down, and then the cost of utilities, really across the world, you know, based upon what's going on politically, also could impact utility costs here in the United States. All right, now we'll get to fund balance. So this is interesting. So in twenty twenty, there was an ordinance passed that allowed PCPS to keep remaining, any remaining funds for capital improvement funding. And then in twenty twenty-three, an ordinance was passed rescinding the twenty twenty ordinance by the city, which recovered two point seven million dollars that goes to kind of a complicated way that we're doing athletic facility funding. It allows the city to recover any remaining balances that we've got from the prior, prior year. So unless that ordinance changes again, funding that's left over at the end of the year by June thirtieth would go back to the city. Next. That TV likes the fund balance screen, I guess. Okay, so there we go. So the last, last slide is a, there's a lot of information up there, but essentially it's a twenty twenty-three renewal comparison between Anthem Healthkeepers versus Optima, Anthem and Healthkeepers versus Optima at a different percentage rate, and then Key Care versus Optima Plus, also at a different percentage rate based upon those different markers that are there between the deductibles and what's provided in each of those plans. So kind of coming back to the summary with health benefits, we feel like it's our, in the best interest of our employees to pursue an RFP to see what's out there and can we do a better job of supporting our employees, so we are on that. So with that, that ends my presentation on the budget. And I believe we move to public comments, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Good evening, everyone, at this time, this is a public hearing, and so the floor is open for anyone who would like to speak, ask that you would come to the podium, give your name. And if you live in the city, your ward or address, you can do either one. The board will not be engaged in a conversation because we're here to hear what you have to say. Also to let you know, tonight, tonight at our regular meeting, we will be passing, the board will take a vote on the draft. This is just a draft, so everything that you say tonight, Dr. Folly is gonna put that into consideration because we're gonna send the draft to city council because we are late getting the budget to them. But like I said, he will put all that information together, and still, we're gonna send it to city council, and it will come back to us for a final vote. So, so anything that do not make it in this budget, he's gonna bring it back to us for another vote. So who will be first? Anyone have anything to say? Who, who said that? Oh, Ms. Mickens? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Bridget, board, Dr. Folly, community, my name is Annie Mickens. I live at ten thirteen Melville Street, Petersburg, Fifth Ward. Because it was my first time seeing it, I couldn't really wrap my head around the conversation about the capital money. Being, having had the opportunity to be on both sides of the table, the capital ordinance was a way of allowing the school system not to fall into just arbitrarily spending money at the end of the year. When the city made the initial move to do the capital ordinance, those monies, we understood, wouldn't be a part of the operating fund, so that's why it was done that way. Because this is my first time seeing it tonight, if I was able to have a discussion, my discussion would be centered around the conversation that was held that the school system would no longer be able to use that money to improve the school system since the city is not making a consistent effort to invest. And so at some point in time, I think the general public needs to understand that money is left over at the end of the year. At one time, did go back to the city. But because we had a vested interest in the improvement of the school system, we allowed that money to stay in the school system. What we need to know as a community is why the city wants to take it? Why does it go back? Why can't it be used in order to do some of the very things the community says and the general public criticizes about the school system? So I have a concern. I thank you for not going with a one percent. A one percent anything kills the idea of why am I making money? Because it will be taken away, so I appreciate the fact that you did go with the three percent. When we have the opportunity as a community to go before council, which is a difficult entity unto itself, we need to know why we're doing it. We need to know the facts. And so the information that's presented tonight is, for me, first-time information. I like to be able to muddle over things, so if we can have copies of the information, it would be helpful. So if someone could share with us how we can get it, that would be very good. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Mickens, we will also get a copy, I'll have Ms. Barrios probably, to also get a copy of that resolution that they gave us where they made the change, where the monies would go back to them for capital improvement.
And you think that that means anything? Because unless they can tell us they're gonna use the money to improve the school system, it would serve no purpose for me.
Right. But you do want a copy, right?
I do want a copy.
Thank you. Next, anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening, board and citizens of Petersburg. My name is Shanna, and I am currently in the beginning stages of starting my own educational consulting firm. My main goal is to close the achievement gap between economically disadvantaged students in the state of Virginia in comparison to students that are not economically disadvantaged. So if given the opportunity by the board, I would love to come and present some ideas that I actually have to actually work with Petersburg to close that academic achievement gap. I, I have history here in Petersburg. I received my educational foundation here in Petersburg, even though I'm a graduate of French George High School. I also received my educational training in terms of being a teacher here in Petersburg. So I have, you know, investments in terms of me wanting to see the city do better. Our population here in Petersburg is very unique considering the number of students that are economically disadvantaged and also considering the number of students who receive special education services. So because I have experience with working with those two groups and I have, you know, results to show that, you know, I can actually improve their achievement, achievement, I would love to come back and present to you all at the next board meeting some innovative ways that I have, not only to work with the but also some parent engagement opportunities that would really help engage parents in terms of supporting them, in terms of their needs, like maybe voter registration so that they can start lobbying for the school district, partnerships with DMV, partnerships with different faith-based organizations to get re-entry into, back into voting and things of that nature. So I have a lot of innovative ideas, and if given the opportunity, I would love to come back and, and present to the board.
Thank you. So your name is Ms. Penn?
Yes.
Okay, you would need to speak to Dr. Folly, and he's gonna connect you with the staff. How it works is you go through the superintendent first before you can present to the board because what you're presenting, that would come to the board.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
See, Dr. Folly, who can she see? See, Dr. Folly, who can she see to give her information to?
Dr. Williams, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can you let everyone know that this is on the budget and not open to all discussion? We need to stick to the budget to get this out the way first before we go to anything else.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Anyone else to speak on the budget?
Good evening. My name is Takari Tucker. I am a citizen of Petersburg. I live at 924 Lower Row, Petersburg, Virginia, and I'm also a student support specialist at Cool Spring as well as Pleasance Lane. I have my whole student support team up. I kind of, I'm a little nervous, so y'all bear with me. I'm gonna read something that is near and dear to my heart, and it does actually have something to do with the budget, and I also have a copy of some things that I want you all to take a look. Good evening. With a heavy heart filled with disappointment and frustration, as I come to, as it has come to my attention via a YouTube announcement, that there's a possibility that our department, student support, may face drastic cuts, reducing our team from five to a mere two, as well as undergo a title and description change. What's even more disheartening is the manner in which this decision was unveiled. Imagine the embarrassment when our division made the decision to announce, according to YouTube, or on YouTube, via YouTube, without affording our supervisor or any member of our team a seat at the table to discuss these potential life-altering changes. We're less than 35 days away from the conclusion of school, and yet crucial decisions about the department's future are being made behind closed doors, leaving us in the dark. Let me make one thing clear, which is near and dear to my heart, the student support specialists are the heartbeat of this division. We are the unsung heroes who tirelessly work behind the scenes, supporting not only just the students but entire families within the school community. Countless times, we've been told that nobody else could do the jobs that we do, from principals as well as staff. They've all acknowledged how vital our roles of the success of the students are. We wear many hats, from handling caseloads to building relationships with family, conducting home visits, making daily attendance calls, providing transportation, diffusing conflicts in the building, and even being a listening ear to frustrated teachers. We do it all. We are lifelines to the families that are in need, where, whether it's groceries or household items or even housing assistance. But despite our dedication and hard work, we face pushback from some quarters, including principals, and even at times the finance department. We've seen events where we've poured our hearts into being dismissed as merely photo ops with credit unfairly diverted elsewhere. Our attendance efforts, which has been meticulously crafted under the guidance of Dr. Brandy Lee, has been transformative, yet our contributions are yet again overlooked. If you'll notice inside of the folders, I've placed the current data for our attendance. And if you would notice, if today was the conclusion of the school year based off the numbers that have been drafted, and this is without recovery, we would have two schools in Petersburg right now fully accredited based off just recovery and attendance. Furthermore, I raise a question about the decision-making process behind the proposed shift. Have we as a division sought counsel from outside divisions regarding the ramifications of depleting the roles of student support specialists and shifting them solely to family engagement with only two individuals to accommodate over 4,000 students and families? Or are we simply following the advice of individuals who have never walked with us to beat the streets or even bothered to understand the significance of our work? Are we assuming that the principals can assemble a team to fulfill our roles when they've shown reluctance to even allow faculty or staff to assist us in our endeavors because they don't have sole control over the duties and responsibilities of the student support specialists in their building? Where is the evidence to support the notion that these positions are unnecessary? Have we bothered to ask the families and/or students or teachers whom we serve how they would feel if this role changed, or how it would directly impact their lives or the schools? It's evident to everyone who's been in the trenches day in and day out that our work is not just important to us, but is essential to our students and our families. We've poured our hearts and souls into these buildings and building relationships with our students and their families, and the impact we've had is tangible. Unlike outsourced companies that may come and go, we're deeply rooted in these communities. Our communities go beyond just checking off a box or meeting a quota. It's about being genuine and having genuine care and connections with our family. We understand the ambiance of the things that our families need and the situations because we've been there, in the homes, on the doorsteps, listening to the concerns and offering support where it's needed the most. Our track record speaks for itself. We've seen firsthand the positive outcomes and the rise when families feel supported and empowered. It's not just about providing the services, it's about building trust and fostering resilience. So let's not diminish the significance of what we do. We are the backbone of this division, and our passion for this work is what sets us apart. Let's continue to advocate for ourselves and for our families as we serve them because our impact is real and is invaluable. I stand here as a product of this community advocating for the students we serve. Scaling back on our department is a disservice to not only the students that we serve and the families, but our entire community. It won't just hurt us, but it also hurt our students that we've supported. I implore you to reconsider this decision. Our team deserves a seat at the table, especially when our futures are at stake. We were promised discussion about alternative funding sources and also the opportunity to be shifted to a different role that could best service this division from human resources, yet we are still here, standing at the podium, fighting for a position that we love so much. Thank you for listening, and I hope that you all will consider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Dr. Folly will set up a, just want to let you know that some of the information you shared was incorrect, and he's going to make sure that you've received the correct information. Okay? Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak on the budget? Okay. CNO1, this is the, who else? Oh, Ms. Curtis.
Frida Curtis, 8A Woodmere Drive, Petersburg, Virginia, Ward 3. I would like to thank you all for considering healthcare, since it's one of the major issues that we face in our city. But I also would like for you to consider forming a committee to get feedback when you're working on the healthcare. It could be with, you know, employees of the, within the district. I think that would be most helpful, so everybody would be on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yvette Wilson, 2 High Street, Petersburg, 5th Ward. I too applaud the effort of giving our employees the 5% raise and
Three.
Oh. I try. I try. I try. I try. But no, in all seriousness, we thank you for considering the increase and using those funds wisely and benefiting our staff, because one of the things that will encourage retention is incentive financially. We all need a little change in our pocket, and I know we will fight with you, though I still have questions of why the council won't give you your money. They're just a bank. And it's our goal as a union to educate our members on that role, what role they play. It's our money. We want it. You know? If you want to give us more money, you can, but the state has already used a formula to determine that that's our money. And I think we need to do more due diligence in educating all about how that formula works, who's responsible for what, because you all know that you are elected officials, just as the council. Okay? And they can play one against the other, but it's the citizens who will rise up because it's their children who don't benefit from those resources. So thank you again, and when you're looking at that healthcare plan, make sure that Did I say 5%? No, that 3% is not eaten up by the healthcare costs. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the budget?
If we can pull that up, please. There we go. So we have a instantly being updated. We intend to pursue putting a new roof on Vernon John's Middle School, replacing the gymnasium floor, replacing the bleachers. We're also working on putting new doors at Petersburg High School, all the outside doors. We're working on an auditorium upgrade and the lighting and sound system. We're also working on putting, if you work at Blandford, there's pretty good-sized gaps in some doors. We're replacing those doors so that we're more cost and utility efficient. So there's still a lot of projects that will be moving through June 30th that are not on this list. If we complete projects between now and then, and then as their funding goes to September, there's a possibility we could bump some of these current projects for fiscal year 24 to 29 up. So these are all prioritized, as you can see on the left-hand side, fiscal year 25. The first three are across the division, exhaust systems, interior painting, exterior painting. What I'd really like to see us do is be able to afford a cycle where we are every year repainting a school. It's very important with older facilities to have warm, inviting environments for our staff and students, so I'd love to see us get on that cycle, and that's been approved by our operations committee. We've got a restroom project at PHS, campus drainage and parking lot, also at the high school HVAC upgrade need there, and then
Excuse me. You all will have to clear the exit. There are seats up here also. Please try to find a seat. We can't block the exit.
He looks at and working with the operations committee on the process. Daryl Godette does a fabulous job. It's been a big driver of improving our facilities, putting roofs on all of our new schools. To funding going away that's been there for three or four years that we've leaned on improved facilities, we've got to find ways in being very conservative in how, I think we do a much better job in how we're being stewards of the public school funds, right? And in order to get to a place where we can do these projects, currently, that's going to have to come from how we manage our public and our local funding primarily, to be in ability to fund these projects. So more than ever, we've got to stay to a prioritized list and then ensure that we can cut costs where we can in order to have the opportunity to improve our facilities. That's the summary. And Mr. Chairman, I believe we go to public comments on the sit plan.
Yes, thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the capital improvement plan? Ms. Mickens? You can come up. Yes, you need to come to the mic.
I'm sorry, I've been way too long. Annie Mickens, 1013 Melville Street, Petersburg. And my first question deals with what I asked about earlier, and that is, at the end of the year, nobody knows how much money is left for surplus. But when the, I would be interested in knowing if when the resolution was made not to return the money to the school system, did we have capital interests that could have been taken care of that we weren't able to take care of because the money did not come back? That's my first question. My second question is, how much education do we do for the community in them understanding that this budget is a part of the city? That the school system cannot raise money in order to pay for this? This has to be before the city. And so therefore, when we are asked to go to the city council and talk about the capital needs of the schools, that we have good knowledge about what it is the school system is attempting to do, because the vast majority of the community, they're not aware of how the capital budgets work, for the city or for the school system for that matter. And for me, the issue becomes new schools. And we have not heard discussion about what needs to be done so that we can stop the Band-Aid approach and get to new schools. And there's not enough conversation. Maybe there needs to be just meetings that deal with capital needs so that people will understand what it is that must be done in order to get to the place that we will stop having to deal with the conversation of our schools being old or our schools not being upgraded, because the vast majority of the community are renters. They're not homeowners. Homeowners pay real estate taxes, and those real estate taxes pay for the school expense. And so therefore, we need to make sure that as we talk to the community, if you're going to ask them to fight, give them something to fight for with clarity, honesty, and true information and not just speculation. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the capital improvement? Okay, at this time, we were in our discussion on the capital improvement. Board members, is there a motion to adjourn from this meeting?
So moved.
About Ms. Nguyen, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Pierce, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank everyone for your comments, and we're going to take all of that into consideration. And Dr. Folly will be setting up some meetings also. I know there's a meeting coming up with PEA also, so he'll be sharing information. Is anyone near, who's out in the hallway? Any staff from central office in the hallway? Who? Dr. Williams, if you could ask Ms. Barrios to check her phone? Thank you. Okay, at this time, the time now is, what time is it? It's 6:10 PM, and we want to go ahead and call our regular school board meeting to order. Ms. Williams, if you would call the row once again.
Mr. Steven L. Pierce, Sr.?
Here.
Mr. Halby Mau, Sr.?
Here.
Mr. Kenneth L. Pritchett?
Here.
Mr. Les Elwin?
Here.
Ms. Joyce Proctor?
Here.
Mr. Bernard J. Lundey, Jr.?
Here.
Mr. Adrian T. Dance?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Next, board members, we move to 1A, approval of the agenda. If there are no changes, I'll accept a motion.
So.
By Mr. Pierce, is there a second? Mr. Lundey, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move to 1B, moan of silence. Ms. Williams?
Mr. Terrell Harris and family in the passing of his grandfather. Mr. Troy S. Petticolas on Monday, April 15, 2024. Ms. Sheila Crawley and family in the passing of her uncle Ms. Sheila Crawley and family in the passing of her uncle. Mr. Robert Mason Dean on Friday, April 20, 24. Ms. Constance Jones, retired Petersburg City Public School employee and family in the passing of her mother, Mrs. Rosa Bonner G., on Sunday, April 21, 2024. Ms. Jana Vasquez and family in the passing of her father. Damage Controlman John Wesley Robertson, Jr., U.S. Navy, retired on Tuesday, April 23, 2024. Mr. Frank Manson, Dr. Tori Manson and family in the passing of his uncle, Mr. James L. Green on Tuesday, April 23, 2024. Dr. Wesley K. McLaughlin, Senior Pastor, Mount Olivet Baptist Church and family in the recent passing of his wife, First Lady Pamela McLaughlin. Ms. Barbara Smith, Petersburg City Public School employee and family in the recent passing of her father.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. At this time, we will have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Next, we move to 1C, pledge of allegiance. Dr. Farley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my friend, Lady Anna Brown, here. There she is. She's back. You were with us a couple of meetings ago. So, Lady Anna Brown is a seventh grade scholar at Vernon Johns Middle School. She's an honor roll student who takes education and learning very seriously. Lady Anna currently serves as the Vice President of the Student Government Association. She enjoys drawing and spending quality time with friends and family. Thank you for leading us in the pledge.
Right hand over your heart. I'm sorry, I'm moving way too fast, but, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you. Thank you. Lady Anna, do you want to come up with? Thank you.
We move to 1D, correspondence. Any correspondence? No correspondence. Okay. Next, we move to number three, recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First recognition tonight is the PCPS Student Liaison Report. We do this once a month. We've got two scholars from the high school with us this afternoon, Jayden Little and Makara Jones. Please come forward.
Oh, oh, that's cute.
What's happening? The T-shirt.
Oh. How you doing? My name is Jayden.
Jayden, if you don't mind. Student who excels academically and currently. Spirited student. He's been accepted to multiple colleges. He sat on attending Virginia State University to pursue a business major to one day acquire and build his own photography business. Please welcome Jayden. And Makara, I'm sorry.
You go ahead.
You and I got to get our routine down. I'm going to bring on Makara for a second, and then we'll turn the show over to you.
All right.
Makara is a diligent high school student who leads her school's dance team for the band as well. She has already received acceptance from five colleges, including ANT, VSU, Bethune-Cookman, and ODU, with a keen interest in pursuing a business degree to one day have a salon of her own. She also will be completing cosmetology class this year. Please welcome Makara. So, how are you, Jayden?
All right. First, I'm going to speak about Lake Mar Elementary School. They had a Breakfast with Dad. It was 75 dads joined their children for our Breakfast with Dad event on Tuesday, April 23rd. It was an opportunity for father figures to gain insights into test-taking strategies they can apply at home while enjoying the meal with their kids. Mark your calendars for Breakfast with Mom on May 2nd. Honors, Society, and Safety Patrols, our Honors, Society, and Safety Patrols served as buddies during the Special Olympics Little Feet Meet. It provided our students with a chance to engage in community service with, while collaborating with their peers and other students as a team. Miss Virginia visit. In partnership with CIS, Miss Virginia visited with our fourth and fifth graders, fifth grade girls to talk about being healthy and making healthy decisions on the afternoon of April 23rd.
Good evening. Petersburg High School, Petersburg FCC LA chapter was named as one of the outstanding chapters of the year in the state of Virginia. Diamond Clanton placed silver in recycle and redesign level two. Cassidy Clayton, Cassidy Clayton placed silver in recycle and redesign level three. Angel Harrison placed gold in fashion design as the 2024 state champion. Additionally, Angel received the Ultimate Leadership Award along with two scholarships, one in the amount of $2,000 from Johnson and Wales and one in the amount of $10,000 from Sullivan University. They have qualified to compete at the national level in July in Seattle, Washington. Petersburg High School had a total of 16 cosmetology students competing in the Skills USA State Leadership Competitions in Virginia Beach with the following receiving medals. Taylor Thompson won the gold medal in the Skills USA Leader Extemporaneous Speaking Competition. Taylor advances to the national competition where she will, where she will compete against all states to determine who's the best in the nation. This competition will be held June 24th through the 28th in Atlanta, Georgia. The following students competed as a team in the Skills USA Leadership Quiz Bowl Competition. They placed third, and each competitor received a bronze medal. Shamaya Johnson, Elizabeth Smith Branzel, Myella Young, Leah Peterson, and Acacia Lee. The students below also competed and represented our school with pride and dignity. Jakaya Hill, job demonstration. Zakaya Richardson, barbering. Nellis Tabata, barbering. Heidi Umbrazio, cosmetology. Kamora Clinton and Kiana Dixon, aesthetics. Taylor Mason, spelling. Sienna Walker, current events. Naya Davis, Alicia Nicholas. To Shayla Bates, total fantasy look team.
Blandford, April 29th, Title One SOL Event was held. Parents and students participated in English and Math SOL activities. Are you smarter than a sixth grader? There were giveaways and cookouts. Five girls with pearls participated in VSU leadership conference. They were also presented with the VSU pearls and gift bags. The accumulating graduation would be held May 8th at the governor's mansion with high T in the tour. Blandford students participated in the NAACP Fashion Show last Saturday, and they ripped the runway.
Wanda Hill Elementary School. On Friday, March 22nd, Wanda Hill had their all black with a splash of color sneaker ball. There were over 200 students present, and they had a ball. Special thanks to House Duma for sponsoring this event. On Tuesday, April 9th, select first and second, selected first and second graders students were invited to the Black History Museum in Richmond, as well as participated in the Children's Book Festival. It was a fun day of musical performances, story reading, and a tour. Special thanks to school board member Bernard Lundey and school board member Eleanor Proctor for joining us. On Thursday, April 18th, Wanda Hill held our first SOL prep session. This opportunity allowed parents to learn ways they can help prepare their scholars for upcoming SOL assessments. Families receive invaluable takeaways.
Vernon Johns Middle School. At Vernon Johns Middle School, we are dedicated to providing our students with their well-rounded education that extends beyond the classroom. On Saturday, April 21st, we took 6th through 8th graders to the Smithsonian National Museum of African American History and Culture in DC to enable them to connect with America's past. The visit was particularly important to many of our students who have a personal connection to the exhibits on display due to their heritage. We believe that the visual representations displayed by the museum enhance our students' understanding of the lessons taught in our classroom. We had a blast with our students and made many memories. On Monday, April 22nd, 2024, Vernon Johns Middle School participated in their first track meet, and they represented extremely well. Out of six schools, our men's teams finished the day ranked first, and our ladies team finished the day ranked second. On Friday, April 26th, a few students from our dance program participated in the Appomattox Regional Governor's School Spring Dance Showcase. The school titled. Title door lead displayed many different forms of dance. Ms. Page engaged our students in the creative process in which the dancers generated a whole dance based off of stories they shared with one another regarding siblings' interactions. This allows students to learn more organic ways to create movement for a dance. Great work to Ms. Page and our students from our dance program.
Pittman Academy held its spring festival last Friday, and students, staff, and members of the community were invited to attend. Several vendors and the fire department also came out to support the event. Pittman Academy has partnered with VSU to build a garden for our students and community members. It will be up and running in early May, and a personal effort led by Kenneth Miller and Twine Will Matt. Pittman Academy has secured summer jobs for six of our students in Petersburg, Virginia. This initiative provides valuable work experience and fosters a sense of community and support within our school. Pittman Academy received donated shoes from Angela Biggs to pass out to our students. We also received laundry baskets from Helping Hands for our students to pass out.
Cool Springs, on April 8th, we had our annual egg hunt for grades K through 5. Students raised for eggs across the yard and tried to find the lucky eggs that had gift cards in them. We had over 2,000 plastic eggs and a candy donated to us from our Cool Springs families and PTA. Thank you to all who donated. We had our SOL cookout dance on April 18th. We had over 100 families that participated in SOL review games, hand-on activities and testing strategies to help prepare our students for the SOLs. Thank you to our student support team and all the teachers and staff who made it a success.
Pleasant night. On April 26th, the PTA hosted a family game night. There were games, food, and ice cream trucks and DJ for all to enjoy. Selected students in grades 3rd through 5th were able to participate in a dance workshop facilitated by Abstract Entertainment. The dance workshop aims to introduce elementary school students to various dance styles in a fun and engaging environment. The experienced instructors led interactive sessions tailored to accommodate different skill levels, ensuring that every student feels included and encouraged to participate. Virginia State University African Students Association visited the school to read to kindergarten students and teach African dance to students in grades 3rd through 5th.
Westview. Westview students participated in Professional Arts Career Week from April 9th to 12th. Various community members and school staff exposed students to careers as dancers, musicians, artists, pilots, and band directors, among many others. Westview families attended a family engagement event on April 23rd, 2024 to learn about the resources available to families at the Petersburg Public Library. Ms. Yolanda from the library shared with families. The reporters are reading to children each night, participating in the summer programs and activities, and how to sign up for the 100 books before a kindergarten initiative. Westview demonstrated its commitment to inclusively throughout the month of April by actively participating in autism awareness activities. They utilized. Worship, autism, autism, and initiative. And nearly 150 students took part in the Little Feet Meet held at VSU.
That's it. Thank you.
Why don't you guys stay right there, and we'll get a photo. Have you got family with you? Or Ms. Fields, I see is back there. Come up. I'm not messing with you, Ms. Field. Our next recognition is going to be given by our Director of Workforce Readiness, Ms. Barbara Smith. We have the PHS Workforce Readiness Competitions.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
So, you did hear some of it from the student on their report of the school, so I'll just be really quick. And those students who are here, please stand, and I do believe Ms., one of the, two of the advisors are here. So, during our workforce readiness month, along with a whole lot of activities that we had, we had students going to state competition in Virginia Beach. So, here we have Ms. Anisia Newton. Please stand. She is the advisor for the Family Career and Community Leaders of America, FCC LA. She was named an Outstanding Chapter of the Year for 2024. She has with her two students, Diamond Clanton placed silver in repurpose and redesign for level two. We have Cassidy Clayton who placed silver in repurpose and redesign level three. We have Angel Harrison, who's not here. She's out playing softball. And based on her accomplishments here, I can see why. She's busy. But she did place gold in fashion design and took the crown as the 2024 state champion, which then qualifies her to go to nationals in Seattle, Washington this summer. There's some more. She also received the Ultimate Leadership Award along with two scholarships, one for $2,000 from Johnson and Wales and one for $10,000 from Sullivan University. Next, we have Ms. Angeline Glasgow, who is the advisor for the Skills USA. And she had with her Ms. Taylor Thomas, who won gold for extemporaneous speaking. And the other students who won bronze medals in the Quiz Bowl, they are out working. Again, the workforce readiness is working. Elizabeth Smith, Shamaya Johnson, Myella Young, Acacia Lee, Leah Peterson. They won the bronze medal and also can qualify to go to state national competition in the Quiz Bowl. So, thank you all. Did you want me to read the other activities we did, or we're good?
No, go ahead.
They can come forward with their pictures, too.
We're getting a photo shot, too.
Come on up. So, also, just to highlight a few of other of our programs during workforce readiness month. We have 10 early childhood development students who are interning at Westview Pre-K Elementary. We have 10 culinary students who consistently cater several events in and out of our schools. We have 30 economics and finance students who are mentored and completed entrepreneurship workshops with our partner Metropolitan Business League. We have two cosmetology and two barbering students who are currently working in salons and barber shops. We have 11 practical nursing students completing their clinical experience at nursing homes and medical centers. We have one automotive student who is currently working at an automotive shop. And then we have one fashion textile student currently. And then we have one fashion textile student currently working in a retail shop using her fashion skills. And it was a great career fair and college and career fair, April twelfth, hosted by Petersburg High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Farley. Next, we'll move on to three C, the V S B A Business Honorable Award. Each year, the school board turn in names of partners who partners with, who partners with the school system. And this year, we selected three, and we do have one of our partners with us tonight that we're going to recognize, and we'll recognize the other two on May the fifteenth. Tonight, we are here to honor and to recognize our twenty twenty four business partner, Honorable. This award is given to Hebron Virginia Incorporated. The Petersburg City, the Petersburg City School Board expresses appreciation to your ongoing support of the community, public schools, and student. Signed by Dr. Cardale Patello and Ms. Gina Patterson. At this time, we're asked that Ms. Janelle Sinclair, please come forward to receive your certificate. Congratulations. Thank you for all that you do for our young ladies at Blinnford and Vernon Jones.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Janelle Blan Sinclair, and I am homegrown from Petersburg, Virginia. And I am just grateful that my journey allowed me to be able to have content and context to give back to these young ladies. As we have been with the Petersburg Public School System now for nine years, and we have grown tremendously, and we can hope to continue to grow with you all and continue to serve the young ladies in the middle school. So thank you. And this is our clinical therapist, Joel Mumford, who is also from Petersburg. So it allows us to be able to connect with the young ladies.
Thank you. We appreciate you. Okay, we'll move to number four, approval of the consent agenda, Dr. Farley, for A, B, and C.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First is, it's the Acting Superintendent's Recommendation that the school board accepts the minutes from the October eighteenth, twenty twenty three work session, February twenty first, twenty twenty four special meeting and work session, March sixth, twenty twenty four special and regular meetings, March twentieth, twenty twenty four special meeting and work session, April fifteenth, twenty twenty four Head Start Training, April seventeenth, twenty twenty four special and regular meetings, April twenty third, twenty four special meeting of the School Board Disciplinary Committee Meeting. Okay. It's the Acting Superintendent, for the personal agenda, it's the Acting Superintendent's Recommendation that the school board approved the final personal agenda. Data May first, twenty twenty four is provided. Lastly, the V D O E Authorization of Signature. It's the Acting Superintendent's Recommendation that the school board approved the authorization of Dr. Cindy Williams to sign all Virginia Department of Education reports, documents, requisitions, and other official correspondence in the absence of the Division Superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Farley. You've heard the recommendations from our Acting Superintendent. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Move by Mr. Dance. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. We move next, Dr. Farley to five A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a special partner with us this evening. Dr. Kim McKnight is here from V C U, and she's going to share great news as we expand the R T R Teacher Residency Program. Dr. McKnight, welcome.
All right, there is a present. Oh, perfect. Look, you're ready to go. So good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, and community. It's so nice to be with you all. My name's Dr. Kim McKnight. I direct the Center for Teacher Leadership. Can you all hear me? Is this better?
Yes.
All right, we're doing great. Okay, so really excited to be here. R T R, formerly known as Richmond Teacher Residency, started fourteen years ago with Richmond Public Schools, and then we expanded. And we're so excited for this really rebrand of what R T R is for Petersburg. And it's not just for Petersburg. It's really as we expand across the nation for the national teacher shortage. And so if we can go to the next slide, please, I'm going to explain a little bit about what a teacher residency apprenticeship is. Perfect. So like I said, we're in our thirteenth, going into our fourteenth year. And we began with Petersburg in twenty eighteen and prepared over thirty-six teachers. We've had Teachers of the Year, like Ms. Mosby sitting here, as well as others. And so we can go right to the next slide, because I want to get to the meat and potatoes. So our mission, and this is a class in Petersburg that we took this picture long ago, and it's the idea that we recruit, prepare, support, and retain extraordinary and inspiring teachers and teacher leaders who are committed to social justice. It's all about collaboration and the idea that we can do this together. Next slide, please. So what's so exciting for registered apprenticeships is that you've probably heard that language before in the Department of Labor, but now teaching is an apprenticeable position. And so in Petersburg, we will be able to pay people a salary and benefits as a teacher resident apprentice for individuals that are trying to become elementary teachers or special education teachers. And it is the idea, you need to have an associate's degree, and you have to have a two point five G P A or higher. And what we are doing is you would do it in two years. So in the first year, you'll be in a mentor teacher's classroom three days a week, while you're taking classes at V C U two days a week. And we pay for the full degree too, so you're getting the full degree and a salary and benefits, so you can earn while you learn. And so over those two years, by the, the last year, so that second year of the residency experience, you're working four days in the school. Then you would commit to Petersburg for three additional years as a service loan. Next slide, please. So the idea of a teacher resident apprentice, it's what we've always done with a residency. It's based on a medical residency, where someone who wants to be a teacher is in the classroom of a mentor from the first day of teacher work week until the last day of school. But in this, you have the associates, you're getting the bachelors eligible for a license, and in that, you'll do it for two years. And the mentor teachers, it is your rock star Petersburg teachers that are veterans. We have lots that have already gone through in the past, and again, I'm, we're going to show some pictures later, and excited to have one with us. Go ahead, next slide, please. So for mentors, if this is something you're interested in, we're really looking for individuals that want that teacher leader experience. You do need to be fully licensed. There is an online application, if you go to our website, which is teach R T R dot O R G, teach R T R dot org. And then we would do a teaching video. I'd like to say that some of our best teachers are our worst mentors. And as a former kindergarten teacher, teaching is so personal that it's very difficult to share your classroom with someone else. And we want people to fail forward, but when someone comes in and says, I want to change all the desks around, and that starts to make you shake a little bit, this is probably not the thing for you. We want the people that are going to say, yes, fail forward. We want you to learn. So that's the kind of mentors we're looking for. Next slide, please. So for the residents, we're looking for individuals that have an associate's degree. It does, there is no, unfortunately, there's no flexibility in that two point five. We've tried to take someone even with a two point four seven, not accepted. So two point five or above. And someone who really wants a passion to be an elementary school teacher or a special education teacher. And those are the eligible degrees. I'm not going to read that to you. But anyone that's thinking about this, at the end, we have a Q R code as well as you can reach out on our website. Next slide, please. So I wanted to quickly go over what this residency year looks like. You can see in the first little car, it's, think of the, the person in the front's the mentor, the person in the back is the resident. And then as it goes on, you take on one subject, two subjects, three subjects, half the day. And then you get to this part that's called solo teaching. And that is where we ask the mentor to really step outside of the classroom for six to eight weeks, where that person's doing all of the planning, all of the teaching, and that mentor's coming in to collect data and do observations, and then they leave. And then it goes back to a co-plan, co-teach, co-reflect, where we really have them, they get to be that teacher. And we want the students and families to view them as equals. Next slide, please. So our service agreement, like I said, this is really a five-year commitment, if you think about it, because it's two years of you getting your degree finalized, getting that experience in the mentor teacher's classroom, and then you are committing as a teacher of record for three. So this is a really serious commitment, but the students of Petersburg deserve that. And that is why we want to make sure anybody who wants to do this, to please reach out. Next slide, please. So this is one of our favorite statistics. In fourteen, almost fourteen years, ninety-nine percent of our veteran teachers reported that being an R T R mentor made them a more effective teacher. And so we're really proud that we don't think this is just a recruitment strategy. This is a retention strategy. Next slide, please. So our matching process, I like to joke, we have better averages than match dot com, because we put a lot of thought into our matches. These are all people from Petersburg, from many years of us doing this work. And what I think is really exciting as we look and think about this is the idea of we want it to be a good match. You're going to spend more time with this person than a significant other, so we want to make sure that it's a good match. Next slide. So we're really, we're, we're very proud that we are a licensing center for the new teacher center coaching model. And this is the idea that it is in the What Works Clearing House that moves student achievement forward through teacher practice. And every mentor teacher goes through this training, and we teach people how to have, you know, feedback and really quality observations in ways that allow the students to be the center. So we ensure that's, that's what our model for mentoring is. Next slide, please. So for the benefits, it's professional development, it's ongoing training, you are part of a professional network, and the mentor teachers make thirty-five hundred dollars when you have someone in your classroom. And again, they're really growing the next generation of Petersburg teachers. Next slide. So there she is again. I just want to keep on putting Sheila on a pedestal. But what I love, teacher working conditions are student learning conditions. And what I love about this picture is that when, when Sheila was Teacher of the Year, and on one side was her first resident, Nakway, and then on the other side is Paula. And I think what's so neat is that Nakway then went on to become a Petersburg mentor for R T R. And that's really what this should be about, is that you start, you're growing that next generation, and then three years later, you give back by bringing the next generation up. Next slide, please. So the idea for the benefits for residents, so if you think you know someone who wants to be a teacher, we really encourage them, and like I said, we'll cover all of the tuition, you will get a salary and benefits. And really, this is the best preparation, and I know I'm a little biased, but I went through a traditional student teaching, and what I would have given to be able to go through this extensive experience would have just been really wonderful. Next slide. So I put this up here. I wanted just to say a big thank you to Mr. Pritchard. He has made some wonderful connections with, we've got Richard Bland, Brian and Stratton. We've got, I wrote them down, so I wouldn't forget, Bright Point, the Department of Veteran Services. We're trying to make these connections, but if you know somebody who wants to be a teacher, we're not open for that long, May twentieth. So we've got a very short timeframe, and we are able to offer, I wanted to go ahead and say this while we're here, is that we're trying to recruit as many people as possible. I'm just going to say that, and, and the governor's office is engaged in this too. So we're really excited to see so much momentum around this. Next slide, please. So this is our email. You can apply at teach R T R dot org if you want. Don't worry trying to tiny URL. Just go to our website, and if you want to talk to anyone, our whole team would be more than happy to talk to you. Next slide. Thank you. So that's where we are.
Thank you, Dr. McKnight.
Thank you.
Let's see if we have any questions from board members. Any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Pierce?
No question.
I, no questions, but I think it's a wonderful idea, a plan, beyond an idea.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation. Oh, thank you.
Teachers start off with a hundred thousand dollars.
I wish. Don't we all think they deserve it? Of course.
Thank you, Dr. McKnight.
Thank you.
Really, I mean, it's, it's great to meet you face to face. We've, we've done a lot of phone, you know, it's been a lot of phone conversation, a lot of texting, but hopefully everything is going well. Hopefully the partnerships will work out, right? We're keeping our fingers crossed.
Fingers, toes, all of it.
Come in here.
Yes, that's what we want. Thank you so much. And this is just the start, so this is what we'll continue to do. We're really excited.
We appreciate it. Any questions for her from the audience before she leaves? Yes, ma'am. You need to come to the mic?
Good evening. That was a lovely presentation. Is this workable for anyone who has above an associate's, a bachelor's, or maybe a master's in another field or something?
Can you, can you give your name for the record?
Kayla Maloney.
She's a teacher.
Yeah, great question. I will try to answer in the mic. Sorry, Penny, very close. Yeah, great question. So we have a lot of people that are career switchers that come to us that have lots of different degrees, definitely capable. So that's not, it definitely can, we can look at transcripts and see if it can work. The big challenge, though, is that we often get individuals that are current provisionally licensed teachers that want to do this. And you cannot be provisionally licensed. You really have to be someone coming into the field because you are in a mentor teacher's classroom. You are not the teacher of record. So that's the big shift. So if it's a master's in something else, not education related, then we could probably look at it. But you need to spend the two years in a mentor's classroom. So thank you for asking. That's a great question. Anybody else?
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. McKnight.
Thanks so much. Great to see you all.
Dr. Farley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll ask Ms. Joy Lowry to come forward. She's going to give us the Summer Academy twenty twenty four update. Along with Dr. Jackson.
Jackson. Well, first of all, let me start out by saying Happy May. And so we're going to have some Mayflowers now, right? But greetings, Chairman Pritchard, Dr. Farley, board members, vice chair, guests, online viewers, and colleagues. Thank you for joining me this evening. I did just want to take a moment to present to you the Summer Academy twenty twenty four updates for this year. Next slide, please. So Summer Academy planning is well underway. And our locations for this year for elementary will be Pleasant Lane Elementary, and for the secondary, it will be Petersburg High School. Summer Academy will meet every Monday through Thursday. And for elementary, we will be partnering with the Y M C A. So they will be there and be doing field trips, activities, and things on Fridays. But P C, P C P S staff won't work on those Fridays at the elementary level. And so our Summer Academy will run from June twenty fourth through July twenty fifth. And so I do just want to make a note that we, it is shortened because of our new academic calendar. And so we wanted to make sure that we had enough time for that transition for the shorter summer, ensuring that our facilities and maintenance crews had enough time to get into the buildings, to do deep cleansings and so forth, to make sure that we were ready to receive our students on August the nineteenth. So you'll notice that it's just about a week shorter than we typically have Summer Academy. And we also will be hosting the Summer Bridge Academy. Well, it's actually the Summer Bridge of Math Program for our rising sixth grade students. And that's for our sixth graders that will be advanced or accelerated in math. So just making sure that they have that foundation and they're ready to go in to that pre-algebra. And that runs from July fifteen through the twenty fifth. That's also at P H S, it's secondary. And then finally, I just want to make note that our sixth and ninth grade transition programs take place the following week. So once Summer Academy is all done, that following week, our rising sixth graders will go over to Blinnford Academy. our rising sixth graders will go over to Blandford Academy. And our rising ninth graders will meet up at the high school, excuse me, and they will be doing their transition programs to get them ready for middle school and high school life. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, some important dates that I want to share with you, just to give you a bit of a timeline of where we are. So, staff applications have been posted. And we have staff that have been applying for all positions. And the Summer Academy website went live on April the eighteenth. There will be a link here later in the presentation for you to view that. And we created a Summer Academy website this year where our, our students and families could go online and register. And that also has all of the registration forms, both in English and Spanish. And there are paper copies available, of course, at the schools for anyone that may need that. But just to kind of give you an overview, administrators, Summer Academy administrators, they are in the process right now of interviewing staff to work Summer Academy. And also, registration has begun. So, in the past two weeks, I am happy to report since April the eighteenth that we have two hundred and eleven students registered for Summer Academy. Last year, just note, we had two hundred and fifty total. So, we are very, very close to meeting and exceeding that mark for this year. Okay? And let's see, what else highlights do I want to tell you? Just, just some other things there, just of note. Bus routes and things will be posted to the Summer Academy website, also along at each school building. So, our families will know exactly which bus hub that they will be going to in the mornings to get to Summer Academy. And then, like I said, that Bridge Up program, just to note, that starts, it's, it's kind of in the middle of the Summer Academy. And finally, one other point of note is that registration begins, excuse me, ends on May thirty-first. So, we have just about three weeks left of registration for our students, and we hope to get that number. And it also includes the mandatory summer school students as well. They have been included in that number as well. So, I just wanted you to make, make you aware of that. And then finally, Summer Academy ends on the twenty-fifth of July, which is also the summer graduation for PHS. Next slide, please. So, just to highlight you on some of the things that will be offered in our Summer Academy, there's kind of two pathways. There's academics and enrichment. And because we do have a shortened summer, we are offering enrichment and remediation, and then, of course, remediation and recovery. So, on the elementary level, of course, we will be focusing on ELA, mathematics, social, emotional learning, and then enrichment activities. And again, that's in collaboration with the YMCA. And for our secondary students, as you can see, they'll have a focus on English Language Arts and Mathematics, science for the middle school level. And they can also recover credits at the high school level for the courses that you see there, English nine through twelve, history courses, math, and a couple of science courses, biology, chemistry, environmental science. Next slide, please. And so, to dig a little bit deeper into our enrichment opportunities, I'm going to turn the mic over to Dr. Jackson, because she's going to share with us some of the amazing opportunities that we have that are related to STEM for this summer. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Lowry. So, as she just mentioned, we have a number of, a number of opportunities for students as far as Petersburg, but we also have a lot of enrichment activities for our students in STEM. So, next slide, please. So, this is just a few, this is just to name a few. Some, this here is just information that's been shared, and some are our direct partners. So, you'll note that a lot of programs at VSU, we've been kind of sending out. But in addition to that, this year, we have an additional partnership with Virginia Tech University, where we also be supporting students in seventh and eighth grade for Camp Imagination. Our ongoing partnership we have, of course, with Virginia State University and a rising STEM program. And this year, again, it ties directly with what we're doing with gaming. They're not just doing esports, but they're also creating these games. So, those students who are already interested in esports, it ties directly with them, and they better participate in that program with VSU. And there will be transportation, picking them up from Vernon Johns, Monday through Friday. And we've already worked those things out. Next, this is a newly, this new program is a boot camp that we put in place. We have students who have been accepted to the middle college. And what we noticed, that a lot of our students sometimes come with a little learning gaps as they prepare to go to get that associate's degree. So, this boot camp will really be instrumental in making sure they close those learning gaps as they prepare and switch from that transition from the typical high school to actually going to take classes on a college campus. In addition to that, we have our STEM drone camp again this year with Richard Bland. This is a residential program. Our students do stay on campus for that week. It was a really, really great program. As I walked down the hall to Petersburg High School, students are stopping me, asking me, when can they sign up? So, we're really excited to do that program again this year. And then now, the new program, Richard Bland also added, is going to be a healthcare program that will focus mainly on rising eighth graders and rising ninth grade students. And that would be, so the drone program is just for Petersburg students, whereas the healthcare program will be from tri-city students. This year, again, we'll also be joined with Mary Washington, where we'll be sending students to the Smart Community STEM Program. Again, this is a residential program. They are sponsoring some students, and then we're working with our state and federal programs to also sponsor our students, so there'll be no fee for that residential program. And then, again, we're really, really excited this year to do a new program at PHS, which is STEM in sports. I'll be working hand in hand with some of our physical education teachers, where we're integrating actual STEM and physical education activities to help increase student skills in certain activities and sports. So, I'm really excited about that program to work along with our physical education teachers this year. All right? With Ms. Lowry?
I will also add, with some of our enrichment programs for this summer, the Boys and Girls Club will be hosting summer programs at Vernon Johns Middle School this summer. And in addition to the Boys and Girls Club, the Parks and Recs will be doing summer camps at Lakemont Elementary School. So, we have a lot of things going on, and we're all working in collaboration to make sure that our students have a lot of opportunities to engage and be active this summer. And so, as I move forward, I just want to tell you about the Summer Academy hourly pay rates. So, as of right now, our Summer Academy administrators, they are summer school, well, they're assistant principals who are twelve month. So, they would not necessarily, if they, we wouldn't get the sixty dollars because they are twelve month employees. When we talk about our medical and wellness personnel, our registered nurses, our LPNs, our CNAs, et cetera, I won't read all that to you, but you can see what the proposed pay rates are there. Safety and security officers will be onsite at both Pleasant Lane and Petersburg High School. And our instructional staff, teachers, will be paid fifty dollars, substitutes thirty-five, paraprofessionals and test proctors twenty-five. Bus drivers, we will be paying our drivers forty dollars and bus monitors twenty-five. And then, our clerical staff, if they are not twelve month, they would make twenty-five dollars per hour. So, we, again, we've had several applications come in for our Summer Academy. And not only our Summer Academy coordinator, but our summer school site coordinators are working through with the principals. They're conducting interviews and making those recommendations to HR for our staff for Summer Academy. Next slide, please. So, that is all I have, but I would love for you to take an opportunity, if you could, link yourself to the QR code there that will take you to our Summer Academy website. And it will also allow you to go and register. So, for those of you that are online this evening, you can use this link to register your student. Again, there are applications there, both in English and Spanish. And we do check those numbers weekly to provide updates to our school nutrition and our transportation departments, just so that they can continue to appropriately plan for the number of students we expect to receive. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Lowry and Dr. Jackson. We'll move, Mr. Lundy, any questions? Ms. Nguyen?
You just know I'm excited about this STEM. I gotta say that. You know I'm extremely excited about this STEM, and I will be getting with you on something else.
And Ms. Proctor?
Nothing.
Mr. Pierce?
No questions.
Mr. Dance?
No questions.
Mr. Miles?
What are we doing to make sure we get maximum enrollment from the kids that we know that's probably have less resources? And make sure we get maximum enrollment? Because I know a lot of times when we post things and advertise things, the ones that needed the most are probably the most disenfranchised kids that we reach out to them the most, to make sure that we get a good enrollment. And can you report back on that enrollment, once we start these programs? And so, we'll know the participation that we have.
Absolutely. So, yes, I can report back. We provide weekly updates to all the departments of the number of enrollment. But even in addition to that, some of the things that we are doing each school in particular, at the, at the secondary level, our school principals and admin teams are targeting students. So, if there's a student that needs credit recovery, they are sending out special invitations to that student to ensure that, hey, Joy, we, we need Joy to come because she needs to recover her English class, or whatever that case is. So, they are sending out those special invites to the students that really should be there, that really need to, you know, be in front of great instruction and to get themselves prepared for their next school year. In addition to that, we are also, not only is it on the website, but it is also being sent out through Parent Square on a weekly basis, division-wide. But in, and if you drill down a little bit further, our, each school is sending it out, not only in their weekly communications, their newsletters and such, but also in their Parent Square communications as well. So, our hope is that those targeted invitations that are personally sent from the school, inviting those students to come join us, because they, you know, do need to be there, will help capture the students that we really need to see.
And I want to add something just a little deeper for STEM, because just as you just mentioned, the students, they, they see it, they want to do it, and they really need a little help and support. I can tell you now, I communicated with parents on off-hours. We have teachers taking our lunchtime, sitting down with students to make sure they're registering. They'll say, they'll tell me before Richard Bland knows, hey, these lincoln's are working. So, we are there, we're helping our students to register. We're not just giving them the flyers, because they do need additional support. And not only that, we're providing transportation to get them there. I can tell you, last year, we actually worked with partners to help make sure they had their bedding and everything, because it's a residential program. So, it's just like moving into college, so that they have their bedding. We make sure our kids go in with their caddies and their comforters and they're set up like it's their first day. So, we don't just give them the flyer, we're there to hold their hands step by step. And I can tell you, I don't even see sun field. If we have eight seats, we fill all eight and I ask for more. So, I promise you, we can tell you the numbers before, and then the numbers after, and our students are really, really successful. And we really do support them through the process of the application and follow-up afterwards, to make sure that they have, they need to be successful in these programs, because they do need a little more support than just giving them the information.
And the reason why I ask that, sometimes in order to really reach out, because these camps and different things, like those enrichment programs, really change lives. And we got kids that's in, that's in situations that it can really change their life. It could take them out of a hotel for a week, because we have them that's, that's homeless, and different things like that. And many times, I talked to them, and then, and I go to those places, and nobody had really asked the teachers, and who, who can we benefit the most? And those conversations never take place.
And they happen. You're right.
Especially, a teacher might know someone in, in their class that they say, who, you know, this could benefit this child the most. But at the same time, we need to note that a lot of things that we send out are not received by people in certain situations. So, that's why we got to inconvenience ourselves a little bit more to reach out for the ones that we know is very disenfranchised. Because we know we have a homeless situation going on in Petersburg. So, we need to really look at those kids. Because that, that, that one week in camp, that one week in STEM, that one week on, 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 on college campus can make a difference in their life and change their whole attitude towards the way they feel about their education. So, that's why I said, we really need to inconvenience ourselves to do the most for the most disenfranchised.
And you're correct, and our teachers are really on it. I can promise you, they're taking that lunch hour. When you say that, I can promise you, they're doing it. And the soonest you're referencing, those are some students who are actually participating, and they're looking forward to going on these college campuses. Not only that, just seeing some of these new football fields and Lane Stadium and things like that. So, I appreciate your comments and sentiments.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to the information when y'all come back, when it's all over, to see how many of them that we actually did reach.
Absolutely.
Chair, can I make, and, and, and we know sometimes we need to toot our own horn. So, if this information could get shared with the powers that be for like the news and anything, or, I know, I know it's probably shared with social media, but anything to toot our own horns, what gets out there about the positive things that we're doing.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Also, have you put flyers out in the community? Like at the library, the laundromats, a lot of kids and parents at the laundromat.
Well, I have not tried the laundromat, so thanks for that, but they have been out. But it's a good idea, really.
Also, at the churches, because a lot of the churches have a section, when you come into the church, where you can get that information.
But I have not tried the clergy, our churches either. We have the, the library, because we have a partnership there where our students go on a weekly basis for the robotics club that still takes place. And we have over twenty students who are. That, so we have a partner there who came and got flyers to distribute to those students and parents who come on a weekly basis.
Okay.
But yeah, we're definitely taking consideration, the laundromat, yes, and at churches.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? Okay, we thank you both.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Five C, Dr. Farley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask Ms. Barbara Smith to come forward again, our Director of Workforce Readiness, to give us an update on the Gear Up Grant.
Good evening, Board Chair, Dr. Farley, Vice Chair, School Board Members, colleagues, and all who love and serve Petersburg City Schools. Gear Up Grant, next slide, please. So, I will give you a little overview of what Gear Up is, and then give you a review of Gear Up currently, on the accomplishments that, that's going on in the program. And then, propose, take a look at the plan that we're going to submit for the program objectives and performance measures. And finally, I will highlight the Gear Up Grant request proposal. And if there are any questions. Next slide, please. So, Gear Up stands for gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs. The goal is to increase our low-income students and prepare them to enter and succeed in post-secondary education. Gear Up is funded through Department of Education and is administered through the CHEV. So, Gear Up worked with the school divisions across Commonwealth to promote post-secondary readiness and success. Next slide. Some of the activities that Gear Up offer our students, tutoring and mentoring, summer programs, college and financial aid awareness workshops, visits to a variety of colleges, college and career counseling, supplemental academic preparation, outreach to help high school graduates as they transition to post-secondary education, and also a twenty-five hundred dollar scholarship for the students. They are eligible to apply for that. Our programs, currently, we have visited Norfolk State, Virginia State Campus. We've attended iFly as part of our STEM activity. We've partnered with the Army for different STEM activities. We had Financial Aid Night with a financial company to assist the parents and the students. We had a Gear Up freshman feast, also town hall with our freshman class and staff meetings, again, to get them excited and, you know, ready for post-secondary education. We had freshman orientation, Gear Up Back to School Night. We have academic tutoring throughout the school year. Then we have a three-day STEM camp during the summer that they can attend. We have National Gear Up Week activity, again, to inform the school of our Gear Up program. One activity they did and was to definitely highlight each student, I'm sorry, each teacher, they posted on their door, where did they go, what were their majors? So, again, promoting the students and letting them see where the different universities and colleges and degrees that the teachers and the staff had in the school. They attend regional meetings, state and national meetings. Next slide. Our first objective is to increase academic performance and prepare post-secondary education for our Gear Up students. And again, that's looking at that STEM activity. Complete a career interest inventory, and then improve the capacity to meet our students' social, emotional learning. Objective number, number two is to increase the rate of high school graduation and enrollment in post-secondary education for our Gear Up students. Graduate, we want them to graduate from high school. We want them to be able to earn an advanced diploma. We want to make sure that the school, the students are meeting the school attendance standards. We, we want to ensure that they're able to be promoted to the next grade level. And of course, we expect for them to graduate high school and enroll in some form of post-secondary education. Objective number three. The objective number three is to increase Gear Up students and families' knowledge of post-secondary education options, preparation and finance. Therefore, we increase the knowledge of their college options and financial aid by making sure we have. Therefore, we increase the knowledge of their college options and financial aid by making sure we have experts and they speak to different financial aid representatives. Students and parents, um, who have talked about college with, um, with Gear Up or someone with their child's school. So we make sure that we have someone available to assist parents and students. And definitely have the students visit at least one college prior to beginning their, uh, grade 11. So currently, we have 314 freshmen participating in our Gear Up program. Finally, our request is to assist us for $45,000 for next year for our academic tutoring, Financial Aid Night and Parent Academy, National Gear Up Week, to continue our college visits, uh, college and career fairs and guest speakers, and then the several, uh, conferences for our staff on the Gear Up staff and then attend regional meetings throughout the Commonwealth. Lastly, to continue our STEM activities and summer camp for our students. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Great presentation. Any questions from board members?
A question here. Did I hear you say that, um, over 300 freshmen attend Gear Up?
Yes. So we provide a service to 14 students. So as we.
At Petersburg High School?
At Petersburg High School, yes.
In what form do you provide that?
So, all the activities, they're invited to all the activities. Um, and of course, we schedule different activities. So for example, like the college tours, we can't do all 314. So we have different days that they go to different colleges. Um, again, all are welcome to like the activities where you have guest speakers, Financial Aid Night, um, again, starting them off there. So not only do we focus on 314 freshmen, but also the ones who are, um, who's been in the program. So the program actually follows them. So we actually have some upperclassmen who are also part of the Gear Up program.
I was just going to query, um, I know we have to get financial aid to get them there, but have you thought about getting anybody from admissions from Virginia State? Because we do have the V-Cam program.
Yes. So actually, Virginia State is kinda like one of our hosts and anything and everything we need, they come and assist us with that. So yes, they are part of that.
For those of you who don't know what the V-Cam program is, it's a 45-mile radius.
Yes.
For students who live in the area of Virginia State.
And they go, they can attend for free, yes.
What is the source of your, your grant? Where'd that come? What, what, um, you're applying to where to get your grant?
To the U.S. Department of Education.
Um, is, is, do, um, is it possible that you can apply for more?
We can, uh, but I think everyone gets a certain amount, um, that they can apply for based on their population, the number of students. So a school division that has more can apply for more.
Now, let me see if I can rephrase that. If you wanted to include more, could you apply for additional funds from other foundations?
Oh, yes. This is just one. Yeah, this is just one means, yes.
Because I know if we, you know, because I know a lot of foundations that would.
Right.
Get to, um, and for this, because it, it helps a lot. Um, um. So, because I work with, I mentor a lot of kids. And, um, when it comes to financial aid and different things like that and college admissions, a lot of things that they're just totally not aware of. And it, and it hurts them when they get ready to graduate and they realize even in a scholarship, certain things are not included, that they need to come out of pocket with expenses. And even when we give scholarships, a lot of these foundations, when they give scholarships, it will not include things like room deposits, admission fees, different things like that. So you'll look at something like, these kids gonna come up short, um, $400, $500 because they don't have the out-of-pocket to pay. We, 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 uh, they experienced that over and, and over again, those type of things that they're not aware of. And also, but the thing is, is that, um, to get them out there early, to make sure it's done. And then with the disenfranchised kids, you find out we had kids that been turned down at the right, when we got ready, when we took them to school because their financial aid didn't go through because their parents didn't file their, um, um, taxes. They didn't have a complete tax thing in, so their financial aid was incomplete. Those type of things that people don't follow up on, knowing that these, their parents not doing the right thing to benefit these kids to get the, um, financial aid. Because if your parents don't file, I don't care how much you qualify for, you won't get a dime. Because they didn't file their taxes or they didn't do it on time enough to get the financial aid, different things like that. So we, it's so many, um, pitfalls out there that we fall into that the kids not prepare. We sent a kid to Penn State. We had to go back because even with that, we found out that they had to have a driver's license. They had to have this, they had to have a, a, a account, a saving account, checking account, different things like. Then they had to apply for an account at Penn State. And we had to get all that done within the last couple of weeks before we went to Penn, took them to Penn State. But the thing is that those type of things that these disenfranchised kids that don't have that foundation support at home, we, 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 we just can't take for granted. We take them there and then the program gonna, gonna go answer, solve all the problems. We, we gotta, I keep telling people all the time, we gotta inconvenience ourselves more and more to make this thing work for these kids. Because we got 29% poverty in Petersburg, but that poverty is producing 62% of the kids. And so it's a lot of kids that are disenfranchised based on just income alone. So when, when you, we assume that, um, the program is gonna work for them, not if we don't turn it upside down and make it work for them. So that, that, you know, that's my biggest concern. So the thing is that, yeah, I'd love to get reports back when y'all, at, at the end of the day, at the end of the program, at the end of the summer, so we could see who had benefited, how it benefited. But we also gotta look at where we can make it better and where it come up short for some of these kids.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Anyone else? Okay, any questions from the audience? Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Dr. Farley, next, we'll move to five D.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. We have nine policies up for first read this evening. Most of these policies have had legal references and cross-references updated. A couple of policies have been reviewed as required. Um, one policy of note is IC slash ID, school year, school day. Policy language updated includes more than 10 unscheduled remote learning days are permitted without approval from the Superintendent of Public Instruction. Any questions from the board on the nine policies up for first read?
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Thank you, Dr. Farley. We'll move, move next to five E.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm gonna ask Mr. Joshua Griffin come forward, our Transportation Supervisor. Um, the Operations Committee has made a recommendation after coming before the board several times on rezone. Mr. Griffin?
All right, Chair Pritchett, Vice Chair, Dr. Farley, board members, uh, community members, all on live. How are you all doing this evening? Um, today, we're gonna be going over the rezoning and I promise you, I'm gonna be short and sweet, okay? Next slide, please. That is our boundaries for our schools that we have established at this time. As you can see, is the. Next slide, please. While we zone, just briefly, we're looking at determining what's best going forward, um, to rezone in certain areas. Um, and we have what our current determination is, and that'll be the next slide over. That is our current boundary that we're looking at right now that we have within question. And we're coming back with, uh, our proposal. And as you all can see, which schools go out of which zone and which is closer on the zone lines. As you can see from Jesse Lee, that goes all the way to Lakemont. As you can see, Crater Square goes to Cool Spring. Um, if you look at, um, Lieutenant's Run, all of those apartments, they all go to Cool Spring. Next slide, please. Our proposed new boundary changes is that Walnut Hill Elementary has a total of 545 students. We wanna take the 21 students. This is our finalized recommendation. Take them from Lakemont, um, so that they can go to Walnut Hill and incorporate them into the school. That comes to 566 students. All Ivy Gates, Crater Square Apartments, Lieutenant's Run, Tango Wood will remain in Cool Spring Elementary Zone. Um, and that is our recommendation based on our overall numbers that we have came up with. Next slide. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. That was simple. And so Mr. Dance and Mr. Miles have had that opportunity to have conversation with you all. So we do not need to hear from Mr. Miles on this. Any other board members? Any questions from the audience? Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Next, we'll move to five F.
Nice move, Mr. Chairman.
I didn't have any questions anyway. We already talked about it.
Next, we're gonna have our new Director of Elementary Education, Ms. Ebony Massey, come forward. She's gonna present the VLA curriculum adoption. With friends.
With lots of friends. Good evening, um, Chair Pritchett, Vice Chair Pierce, um, School Board Members, Community Members here and online, as well as Superintendent Farley. So very excited about being here today. I'm so glad that he took a little bit of time because we're gonna take a little bit more time tonight to talk about something that we believe is super important. And that is the adoption of a core curriculum, reading curriculum for our students. And so, um, we are pleased to come before you today to share our recommendation for that core curriculum. And it will be implemented in school year 24, 25. So before we share the recommendation, I wanna take a moment, if you'll go to the next slide, and talk about the topics that we'll, um, share today to go over the extensive work that the, um, Petersburg City Public Schools, VLA Committee members went through to look at the adoption of this curriculum. We'll talk about a VLA overview, just to give a little bit of context for our community members and our school board members. Also looking a little bit at our data, the process for the timeline, pros and cons as to why the recommendation was made. Looking at the results from several stakeholders as well as the recommendation. So if we can go to the next slide. All right. Um, and again, my name is Ebony Massey, the Director of Elementary Education. I wanna take a moment to recognize the committee members, and several of them are here today. If I could have you please stand. Um, we have, uh, Dr. Tia Palmer, Sheila Mos, Mosby. I'm sorry. Brenda Chaddock, Jennifer Culpepper, Tasha Jackson, Joy Lowry, Nestor Lamas, Dr. Nikita Gates, and Tyronda Morrison. Several of these members will speak tonight alongside me. So let's go to the Y. If we can go to the next slide. In 2022, the VA Literacy Act was passed by the General Assembly to approve literacy outcomes for Virginia youth. And we're talking about students in grades K-8. I'd like to just share a couple of tidbits with you. We are in a literacy crisis, not just here in Petersburg, but across the nation. And when we think about that, um, across the Commonwealth, one in three kindergarten to second grade students are reading below benchmark. And far too many third graders are not passing the SOLs. This impacts our students not only in third grade, but for years to come. Did you know that, um, students that are not proficient in reading by the end of third grade are four times more likely not to graduate high school? So we know that we have a critical issue that we need to take time to discuss. And I am very proud of the work the team has put together. If we can go to the next slide. This slide here is a little bit disheartening when we look at it. The orange marks the, um, achievement levels of our students across the Commonwealth. And when we look at our blue marks, we see where Petersburg falls. One thing that happens is that we look at, um, yes, it has kind of flatlined, but one, um, trend that we absolutely don't want to see is from last year to the next year. If we continue in that trajectory, we know exactly what will continue to happen. Can we go to the next slide? So, when we think about the Virginia Literacy Act and thinking that now we have the law on our side, there are six really strong components of the act that I think are important for all of us to understand. The first one is that every student, and it says kindergarten to grade three, but I want you to know that, um, Assembly has, um, agreed to having this go K-5, right? And so, and then the next year, we will add on middle school, okay? All right. So every student in kindergarten to grade three will receive core literacy instruction from evidence-based curriculum for the entire literacy block, not just 30 minutes how we used to teach. We would give whole group grade level instruction for 30 minutes of a 90-minute block. And then we would differentiate instruction for students. We are, that is not what they are asking now. They're asking for us to do evidence-based literacy instruction for the entire block, grade level, and providing scaffolds to support them. They also would receive additional instruction and intervention as outlined in a student reading plan for all students that do not meet those literacy benchmarks. We also think about every family we're asking to be involved in this process now. We want every family to have access to free online evidence-based literacy instructional resources to support their children's development at home. We also want to help and encourage parents to participate in the development of those student reading plans. We also want every teacher of students in grades 3, 5 to use those evidence-based literacy curriculum for the entire literacy block and assess students' learning, um, using appro, approved literacy screeners routinely throughout the year. And using that data for whole group instruction and individualized instruction and intervention. And we want to provide pre-service, um, opportunities for our teachers that are coming in. We were just talking about the RTR program, helping to make sure that they also have education in the science of reading or evidence-based literacy instruction. Next slide, please. We also want to ensure that every reading specialist that we have working with students in grades, um, K through 5 will coordinate and implement intervention services for students not meeting those literacy benchmarks. And we also wanna make sure that they will develop and oversee the implementation of student progress on reading plans. So we're talking about those assessments and making sure that they happen across the year. Every division will also develop a division-wide literacy plan. This is why we're here tonight when we're talking about the next couple of bullets. We want to ensure that all kindergarten students, I'm sorry, kindergarten teachers have and use evidence-based literacy curriculum. So the state has approved several curricula that they, um, want us to use across the state. And those curricula have been vetted heavily by the state, but also when we talk in just a few moments, we have two curricula that were heavily vetted by our team as well as being able to get stakeholder input. We also wanna make sure that we are providing one reading specialist for every 550 students in our district. And we wanna make sure that our staff, I'm sorry, we also wanna make sure that we provide professional development to all of our teachers grounded in evidence-based literacy instruction. We wanna do that not only for our teachers, but for our principals as well as our reading specialists. We also know that we will receive coaching and support from the regional literacy coaches, and those are folks from the state. And again, just reiterating the importance of making sure that our pre-service teachers are grounded in that evidence-based literacy instruction. Next slide, please. There's also a second part. When I keep talking about that evidence-based literacy instruction, it's really grounded in the science of reading. What we realized is that what we had been doing really for the last probably 20 years was not really grounded in research. And so now we're looking at this rope here. You see, it's called Scarborough's Reading Rope. And this really kind of breaks down the scope of reading instruction and how students learn to read. It's really a brain-based approach. And there's two sides to it. Um, the first side is word recognition. You might call that phonics, phonological awareness and, and the how to learn to read. And then we have the other side, which is language comprehension. And that's really around vocabulary, background knowledge, and being able to think about what it is that you're reading and comprehend that. When you put that together, that makes a skilled reader. And so we wanna make sure that we're balancing on both sides of that rope. The state has also developed a reading comprehension framework which covers much of the same aspects of Scarborough's Reading Rope. If we can go to the next slide. Before we go there, I do wanna also just throw in that the state, in addition to the Virginia Literacy Act, has also, has also required that new standards are implemented for school year 24, 25. So in addition to new curricula, the other things that I said, there are several other things that I can come and talk to you about as well. But also knowing that those, uh, new standards are coming down the pike, um, at the same time that this Virginia Literacy Act is being implemented. So now I'll turn it over to Ms. Jackson. So, now I'll turn it over to Ms. Jackson, who will talk about the timeline that this committee went through, because it was clear, open to the public, and I think very transparent, and you'll see that as we continue to talk.
So, tonight, I will share a little bit about the process that we took place in order to prepare for the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act. So, what we did was we contacted vendors, and they provided us with materials to review. We met monthly to review and vet those materials with a rubric from the Reading League. And then about June is the time that we finally narrowed down our choices to CK, oh, Lord, Amplify and Benchmark. And at the beginning of August, we shared those materials with the teachers, and they were in the buildings for about two weeks for them to review. Then probably between the months of February and March, we shared those materials with parents, and then we shared them with board members here at the school board office. And during that time, the vendors actually came out and did presentations on their products. And then in April, we came together again, and we shared the materials with the teachers, principals, counselors. Other staff members had an opportunity to review those materials for a second time, and during that second time, they had the opportunity to collaborate with the literacy specialists. And that's just a quick overview of the process that we went through to get us to where we are today. And next, I'm going to pass it on over to Ms. Cladick, and she's going to share with you all the pros and cons of both of the products.
All right, so I'll go over the pros and cons of our two curricula that we narrowed it down to. Again, one is Amplify CKLA and Benchmark. So, Amplify is an English-language arts curriculum for grades K to 5th grade. It's divided into a foundational strand and also a knowledge strand, and both are needed to reach a skilled reading. The foundational piece is for grades K to 2, and it focuses on phonics skills that are taught in explicit and systematic manner. These skills are practiced by reading decodables. The knowledge strand is for grades K to 5, which includes authentic, diverse text, social studies, and science texts that provide students with wide breadth and depth of vocabulary and background information, knowledge. Each student has their own workbook to complete their work during the class, as well as take-home reader to practice at home. And speaking of home practice, there's also a parent letter that goes home that explains what the child has been learning, and there's a parent portal with many resources that the parents can access to help their student with learning at home. Writing is also incorporated into both the foundational and knowledge strands, so the students are responding to their reading by writing about it. Amplify has assessments to baseline and monitor students' progress, and teachers in turn use this data then to individualize their instruction. Amplify also has components for small group, supplemental, and intervention. The one con that we found was many moving pieces. However, everything a teacher needs for reading instruction is included either online or in the teacher guide. Next slide. Unfortunately, upon further review, we found more cons than pros for Benchmark. While it is easier to use and also has take-home decodables, they are not true decodables, and it has scored lower on the S score scale. Other cons are that the intervention materials are sold separately, therefore at additional cost, and the narrow focus on Virginia SOLs. So, when compared to Amplify, many activities are also of lower rigor. So, this concludes the overview of the pros and cons. I'll now hand it off to Ms. Morrison from the Department of Special Education, Mr. Lamas, the lead coordinator.
I had the opportunity to review the Amplify curriculum and the Benchmark curriculum on February 20th and 21st, at vendor presentations open to all stakeholders. After listening to the presentation, reviewing the materials on my own, and sharing the materials with the Special Education Advisory Committee, SEAC, in March, I would like to focus on the pros of Amplify. I feel Amplify is the best choice for all students in our district, but especially English-language learners and students with disabilities. Amplify is based on the science of reading, which we have discussed earlier in our presentation with Scarborough's Reading Rope. The Reading Rope has a focus on language comprehension and word recognition skills. Students need to become excellent readers who understand what they read. Amplify's instruction for background knowledge, vocabulary, decoding, and phonics is embedded in the curriculum along with decodable text. Books, students can read by sounding out words, just not by memorizing words. Building background knowledge is key to students with disabilities who may have cognitive deficits, decreased processing speeds, deficits in long and short-term memory, and decoding or English learners who are new to the United States. The Benchmark curriculum expects for students to come to school having certain background knowledge, but not Amplify. It closes the gap between background knowledge in all the content areas, reading, science, and social studies. By explicitly placing the content into lessons, tier-one instruction is filled with information on vocabulary and many subjects the students may not have been exposed to in their home environment, but is needed to pass the SOL. I absolutely love the scripted teachers manuals, because the lessons for the teachers are scaffolded and differentiated for tier-one instruction, which is needed to pass SOLs. The teachers manuals are hard copies, and if the internet isn't working, the teachers can still have instruction. The teachers don't have to guess what to say or what to teach, because the manual is scripted and has a guide on the side that tells them how to work with students who need support, which would be students who need tier-two and tier-three interventions. And it also teaches them, tells them how to reteach the information and provide repetition, which some students may need. The teachers guides also provide a challenge lesson for students who have mastered the basic concepts or who may be gifted. So, that's three different areas where it's scaffolded. In summary, my four pros for Amplify are: it is based in the science of reading, instruction is embedded to build background knowledge, vocabulary, and decoding skills needed to make all students excellent readers, including students with disabilities and English learners. Teachers are, number three, teachers' lessons are scripted and differentiated. Teachers don't have to guess about instruction for different types of students and the learning styles of students. And four, students will be provided with workbooks, so teachers don't have to make copies for lessons.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I do not only have a professional responsibility, but also a personal interest in making sure that English learners in Petersburg City Public Schools have equal access and opportunity to be successful. With that being said, Amplify will offer a parallel Spanish language curriculum, at the same time that they support language acquisition. It supports the domains. For those of you who are not familiar with the domains, what that means is the four domains areas of a second language and first language, speaking, reading, writing, and reading. Amplify, talking about foundational skills, is also designed to support bilingual models, ESL models, which is actually one of our models here in Petersburg City Public Schools to support multilingual learners. Any transitional bilingual supports, language trends, and Spanish immersion program. And last but not least, it also focuses on scaffolding strategies to support multilingual learners regardless of the proficiency level they perform at. And what I mean is either level one, or level two, three, four, or newcomer. Thank you. Now, I'll turn it over back to Ms. Jackson.
So, now, we'll share the results of the surveys with you all. Next slide, please. Okay, so, back in March, the parents had the opportunity to review the materials. After they reviewed them, they did complete a survey, and these are the results of the survey. So, as you can see, Amplify was preferred more than Benchmark. Next slide, please. And on this slide, we have the teacher survey that the teachers completed at the beginning of the school year, and these are the results from the beginning of the school year survey. Next slide, please. And on this slide, we have the post-teacher survey, and this was a survey that was completed after they reviewed the materials for the second time. I think what happened was the teachers had a little more knowledge about what the Virginia Literacy Act was, and so that gave them a little more understanding of what they needed to look for when they were going through the process of looking at the materials, to find a program that was going to be more aligned to the science of reading. And so, Ms. Massey is going to come in, and she's going to explain a little bit more as to why we did a second survey.
Yes, because, you know, I'm new. So, I was like, why did y'all do two teacher surveys? And I think people will want to know, why did you do two teacher surveys? So, if we can go to the next slide. I mean, I think it's really important to note the journey that Petersburg went through this last year, to really make sure that our teachers were empowered and knowledgeable. So, at the beginning of the year, and also knowing the Virginia Literacy Act was not really clear at the beginning of the year, and they made a lot of adjustments and brought a lot of clarity throughout the year. So, thinking about at the beginning of the year, the first survey was administered really too early in the year. Many teachers were not even in place at the time, and also, teachers previewed the materials without any real guidance. They just were kind of put out, as Ms. Jackson said, for teachers to look at. So, during the year, the district implemented a program called UFly. This was really grounded in the science of reading, and many teachers have seen results with students and their achievement with reading through this science of reading program. In addition to that, teachers and long-term subs received education in the science of reading. We joined the consortium, CIP. VDOE approved not only the K-2 resources in December, but then in June, which again, was pretty late, the 4, 5 curriculum. Vendors were made available to teachers to hear presentations, and those pros and cons were developed by the committee. And so, once they had that opportunity to go through it and be able to learn more about the science of reading, actually see how the science of reading can help improve students' literacy achievement, I think that's what made that shift from the beginning, because Benchmark is actually much more traditional in the way that it approaches literacy instruction. All right, if we can go to the next slide. So, dun-da-da-dah. With that in mind, this is now the recommendation of the textbook committee, is to go with CKLA Amplify. If we could just take two or three more minutes of your time, we wanted to show you a video of children, they could be Petersburg's children, and talking about how CKLA has helped them, as well as the benefits. So, thank you, Ms. Yates. The mute volume initiates, I think. Oh, on the computer. Well, if we can't see it, it's okay, but maybe you can see it in your own time. But, so we'll just go on and go forward from there. But what's really, really nice, and you'll hear this here, is that they pretty much were going through the same things we were going through in terms of an adopted, needing to adopt a curriculum, new standards, and students that really weren't making the mark, our students weren't making the mark in the way that we needed to, as well as having a high number of new teachers and vacancies. And so, being able to really have that opportunity to bring in that curriculum alongside support, really, they were able to see marked improvements in their students' reading achievement. So, it's four minutes. Take it on your way home and read it or something, but listen to it, but it's a great little video. All right, are there any questions?
Thank you all. Great presentation. Any questions from board members?
Yes.
Mr. Lundey?
Yes, good presentation. I was wondering, where will our paraprofessionals fit in for this support?
So, in the Virginia Literacy Act, if you remember, there's a segment for the intervention. We do have opportunity for the PALS tutors or EIRI, based on the Early Intervention Reading Program from the state. They provide funding, and for this particular tool, the state, so just a little bit of background, the state went through, I talked about, being able to approve the core curriculum. There were several core curricula, but they're also going through the process of approving intervention and supplemental resources. One thing that's unique about Amplify is that it has been approved for core, and it is on the list of approved resources for intervention and supplemental. Although the state has not made its final decision, it has made it through all of the iterations that the state has gone through for that approval process. And so, for our paraprofessionals, what will happen is for, I would like for our interventionists, if that goes through, for our interventionists to be able to provide tier-three interventions to our students, because they will be the most qualified and most certified folks to provide that. Our paraprofessionals would then have targeted interventions provided for tier-two students using those intervention materials. So, they will also have a very targeted program to be able to utilize, rather than something teachers have to make up and give up to students. It will be targeted, grounded in science research, and an opportunity for them to progress monitor along the way.
And how often do our paraprofessionals get the opportunity to be inclusive with some of the ideas that are being taught to the teachers?
Do you mean in terms of the training?
Yes.
Now, I can't speak to anything that happened prior to my time here, but with my time here, my plan is to have paraprofessionals be trained in that science of reading, as well as in the tools, and then also having our interventionists, as well as our specialists, help to support fidelity to that intervention happening in the buildings.
Thank you for your question. This past year, every PD day that we had, we made sure that our paraprofessionals and our long-term subs, everybody participated in the training, because we know that everybody need to be at the table. So, we had teachers, paraprofessionals, and our subs.
And I wasn't really questioning it. I guess, we were so used to looking at our books during the years and getting a chance to have an opportunity to look for some of the things we know or knew that was good for our students, but we weren't using them a lot of times. And so, it makes it kind of difficult when we go through the change so much, because we are under the microscope, and we got to get from under this microscope. And a lot of things happened that I've seen in the past that really disturbed me, because it affects our younger kids. And that is, as we walk through our halls, we have our fingers still over our lips, and then you're holding kids from being thinking strong. You get them in a position where they don't even want to say anything. So, I wonder what, make sure that we use our good techniques, so that we get the results that we are looking for. Thank you.
And we are hoping that we can actually start training this summer. We're starting planning the PD calendar for the summer and for staff to return.
Ms. Wee?
I was just, want to inquire, with our ELS students, ESL students, how many paraprofessionals do we have to assist them?
Well, we do. So, we currently now have one at Westview, but we do have fully licensed ESL teachers and teachers with professional provisional license. Now, so we're a team of 10 teachers across the division.
We, I'm sorry, we do have teachers, but how many paraprofessionals do we have to assist?
When we talk about ESL, we focus on fully licensed and endorsed ESL teachers, because that's what counts for the state, and that's our obligation as well.
Ms. Park, any questions?
No.
Mr. Peters?
Thank you, sir. I think Mr. Lundey answered my first question, regard, well, we talked about paraprofessionals. Amplify CKLA, what's defining that for me? This is going to be new to me, too. So, all of us are going to have to wrap our arms around it. Can you back up a slide or two, I think, maybe? Can you back up a slide or two, I think, maybe, seventeen?
Core knowledge.
Core knowledge, language arts.
Say it again?
Core knowledge and language arts.
Thank you all, I appreciate that.
Takes a village.
Right. And I only ask the questions, just simply because we're gonna have to wrap our minds around this, too. And I'm just talking not only to you all, but the board as well. How soon, when do you think, or how soon we can start seeing some evidence-based practice of, of this? This is gonna be new to all of us. So I'm just curious to know how we're gonna measure it, how soon we can start seeing some evidence of it. I know you mentioned some stuff in there about phonics, how well is it working, the dynamics? Because we have a, we know we got a very diverse population of children, parents included. And this is gonna include them on a larger-based scale. So, how soon do, do we, would we consider seeing something we can start looking at that's tangible? Because I'm, you know, I'm, I'm on la-la land, so all of this is gonna be new to all of us.
I think that's a really great question, and you can kind of take it in two directions. One, when you're implementing a new curriculum, sometimes that just takes a little bit of time. But in terms of looking at data, there are opportunities, I, I also, I told you, I can talk about VLA all day long. So, PALS, the traditional PALS assessment is also changing next year. And so that's going to be an opportunity for teachers and everyone else to get trained on this new assessment. But that does happen three times a year, and we'll have an opportunity to be able to look at that data. In addition to that, with the intervention program, should you all approve that as we continue to go forward, there's an opportunity for progress monitoring, to be able to assess students along, in between those benchmarks, to be able to see how students are doing. Typically, that uses the DIBBLES assessment, and that is more of a fluency assessment that really breaks down into students' letters and sounds. Also, looking at fluency and being able to decode those consonant vowel words and whatnot. Those assessments typically would happen for students that are significantly below benchmark. About every two weeks, we'd be able to look at some of that data. And then for students that are proficient, it goes as far as about every quarter. And so we'll be able to look at students' growth. And the other really cool part about that assessment is that it will break down by skills. So then it feeds into the intervention and what students need, and the skills that they'll need support in.
Okay, two things, I, not I, however, if it's the will of the board, two things. One, in the presentation, can that be amplified and spelled out with K, with CKLA? You know, so it can be identified what that is? That's one. And two, if it's the will of the board and, and the public at the fir, end of the first nine weeks, all of this can be, we can see it. You know, my, one of my former educators is, is in the room, and she knows that I like to put my hands on stuff, so I wanna see it. That's the only way I'm gonna...
I was gonna say, it's out in the hallway if you wanna see the curriculum, and then, we have opportu, we, we...
Wonderful.
I think you'll, I think you'll really like it.
But I would like to, I, 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 I'm thinking that if we start those acronyms laid out, not tonight. Not, not, not.
If somebody can fix it, I think it'd be nice for them to see it.
But, uh...
It's online, too.
Yeah, but the acronym itself, so when we do the presentation, it's, it's laid out. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Mr. Danz?
Yes, excellent presentation. I think it's gonna be a great reading program for our students, and I like the part that it's gonna make it easier for our teachers and our paraprofessionals, because I know our teachers have to do a lot of planning in order to teach, so it'll make their job a whole lot easier, and, and help us to do what we need to do at a much easier pace. Thank you.
Can I just add, though, I'm gonna put it out here to the public, because I've gone through several implementations in different districts. It is an excellent curriculum, it is comprehensive, teachers will have to take the time to study it. And you may hear some, teachers are feeling like, oh, they're telling us what to do, or we're not able to do it, but we know we want it to be consistent across the district for every student and have that opportunity. So just as a heads up, that, that it should be easier for our teachers, but they will have to dig in, in a way that they don't have to go out and find all of these really good materials, and they don't have to develop those lesson plans, but they will need to spend the time studying.
I can agree with that.
Yeah.
Great. Mr. Miles?
Yes, it's great that you said you went over a lot of this with the teachers. How many in that survey that you did, not including the ESL? Because the ESL, you already explained it to me, every ESL teacher has to be licensed, correct? So we're good, and I have seen the progress in the ESL students when it comes to that area. Matter of fact, the last two years, I think we had valedictorians and salutatorians that came through the program that were ESL students. So I see the effectiveness of licensed students and give, licensed teachers in giving them the, the, the opportunity to excel and grow. So those licensed teachers mean a lot. That's why I wanna ask you, how many of those teachers in that survey, when it came to non-ESL, were licensed teachers, provisional teachers, and long-term subs?
So there were a total of sixty-two teachers that went through that survey.
Mm-hmm.
And there was a combination of teachers and administrators.
But you don't know which was which? You don't know how many was what?
I don't think that we, in the survey...
So, we couldn't break it down, because they had to use their email to sign in for the survey.
And, and the reason why...
It's not how we looked at it that way, but they did use their email, they had to tell what school they worked at, and what grade.
Yeah, and, 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 good presentation, but when it comes to people understanding the effectiveness of a program, you need to know how many licensed teachers you have, just like the federal government said, all ESL has to be licensed. And then we need to understand the need of each teacher that's not licensed. And the development, training them is, is never enough when it comes to non-licensed teachers. When you have a professional licensed teacher, I had just got back from a national conference, and they give licensed teachers leeway to teach without, they, like you said, you go over the training with the new program, and they turn them loose. But then you got provisional licensed teachers and, 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 and long-term subs, that we need to make sure we bring them on board. And what they were doing, when I went down to New Orleans, and I went in there day early and visited these schools, I was in the school system. I went in there during the school week, and Mr. Pritchett and, and Dr. Fowler allowed me to go in there early and do a pre-conference visit, so I can visit the school. Their, their specialists were in the classrooms daily, with the teachers, working with them, until they become proficient in what it is that they're training. Because, let me tell you about selecting a, a credited reading program, or any program, STEM program, math program, science program. All on work. All on work if you apply it right. It's just like a playbook.
Yeah, that's true.
If you know, if, a playbook, every play in that book is designed to do the same thing, score. Whether it's, go from the, the one-yard line to the, to the goal line, whether it's a ninety-nine yard touchdown, or a one-yard plunge. Every, everything in that playbook is designed to do the same thing. There's no place that's not in there, that's not designed to go into that, to, to score. Everyone is designed to score. So when you come up, so when you come here with a curriculum, I know it's already certified, whether it's Amplified or some other program, it's how we implement that curriculum. Now, can your staff stand back up, except for the ESL person? Can they stand back up? Okay. What school are you in? You're, you're at Cool Spring?
I'm at the school board office, but I also facilitate language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. And we have eleven teachers who are now in a cohort for reading and spelling, and we did this last year as well.
Okay. What's, what school, school are you in? Pleasant Line?
I'm at Vernon Drive, Cool Spring.
Cool Spring. And, y'all can sit down, the reason why I ask that, be, now, now, no, no, because people, people might not know that we have somebody there. One more minute? All right, because I'm gonna ask you another question. Because, well, I come, you know, because my experience, that I just experienced a few, about a month ago, how many hours are we gonna spend with these provisional and, and long-term subs? Because we need to spend classroom hours with them, a lot of classroom hours with them, in there to make sure that we bring them on board, because giving them training is not enough. We gotta continue to stay with them until we get them right.
I'm so excited about that, thank you, yes. That's very true, I have to say, it's very true. And that's gonna be the job of our coaches and our specialists and, and other folks.
Are these coaches?
Some are specialists, and some, we, I don't know right now, so...
We'll see.
I don't know all the positions. Been approved yet, but we will have coaches for your...
Hopefully, they're approved.
She wasn't looking to be standing up there that long.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Miles, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Ma, is it Ms. Massey, right? Ms. Massey? Did you all have any questions in the audience?
Educated thirty years, I'd like to commend the committee for previewing the, the curriculum. I learned something here tonight, I know education is always evolving and growing, so I got my homework tonight, I'm gonna look up that Scarborough... But what I wanna also share is I've been down this road with new curriculum before, and one of the things that frustrated me the most was we didn't hold on to it long enough to collect the data to see what worked, before once again, somebody else is peddling curriculum. So I'm hoping that this board will take this data, this information that we learned, and grow with it. And make sure that your teachers have all of the components, not pieces and parts. Because that makes a difference. And to piggyback on what Mr. Miles said, yes, we do have, uh, long-term subs, we do have teachers. We have to make sure that our, our senior teachers, our seasoned teachers are working hand in hand. I mean, Zoom instruction, it does not work when it comes to bonding and sharing information, it doesn't. I learned best by the skilled teacher who been in that classroom a long time. She said, this too shall pass, but get it done, you know? And so we need our opportunities for those individuals to come together, to take, because if you give them something new, I'm gonna tell you what they're gonna do. If they don't understand it, and if they don't have the support, they're gonna go back to the familiar. Oh, I'm gonna pull out them lesson plans I had for ten years, and I'm gonna Xerox, Xerox that old book. So give your teachers and your aides the opportunity to embrace it, take it on. And I'm sorry to hear PALS is changing, because that... Okay, because that's, that's great data. I talked to one of your teachers when I was working through a situation with him, and he was saying that one of my kids didn't know how to read, and, you know, I said, did you take the PALS test with? Yeah, I took the PALS test, but he, he still doesn't know how to read. And I said, did you know that on that site, there are instructions that you can use with your groups in your room? No, I didn't know that. So, you know, let's take advantage and train those young people of all those things that we just already paid for. They're already to, to our advantage, you know, that, that's my passion, making sure everybody knows what they need to know. Because we can't remake a brain. And we have to grow these children to take my job, your job, and pay my social security. Thank y'all for having me.
Thank you. Ms. Curtis?
I'd too like to thank you for your efforts on the reading program. I have a different perspective. I know we have pre-K students, number one. All students do not come through our system for pre-K. I would like to see, and I'm just saying, because I know one division is doing this, they are screening their K students, students coming into K, to see if they are ready for kindergarten. You see what I'm saying, to see where they are and what they are doing when they're doing early registration. They are doing that screening, and they are telling their parents, okay, your child did X, Y, and Z on this assessment. But they are also sending packets home when they leave with that assessment, and giving them something to do over the summer. So I would like to see that being implemented with our kids, because we know everybody does not go through our system. But it would be nice if every child see where they are, and that would give you an indicator of what you need to do and how you need to progress on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Ms. Mickens?
Before she speaks, so I do wanna say that there is a Virginia kindergarten readiness screener that students do go through. And I will say this, the pre-K, our students go to pre-K at a higher rate than those of the state. And when you take that Virginia readiness screener, they're actually close to the scale for Virginia students. So when I look at that data, and then we look at the data that we see now, we start to see even more of a need for that high-quality instruction, along with pairing it with high-quality instructional materials. Right, so, so I just found that out last week, when I looked at the data and did a deep dive, actually, probably this weekend. And so I just thought I would share that, since you talked about it. And I do think we do need to continue that practice and be able to support our parents with being able to help their students at home. So thank you for bringing that up.
Mr. Chairman, in, in order to improve, somebody else?
Yes.
I'm doing well. I don't have a child in the school system. I do not work for anyone. But I'm on fifty million committees throughout the city, and just happened to be in a meeting, wellness meeting, on last week. Just happened to mention that I was a retired educator. And after the meeting, a lady came up to me and said, I need to talk to you. I have a child in the Petersburg Public School System, and they can't read. She's in the special needs program, and she talked me, and I said, now, I'm not teaching, but I will make contact, give the information. It pleases me to know and to be able to call, I took her number, I didn't take her child's name, and be able to call her and tell her about what the Petersburg Public School System is considering doing to help address the reading needs that she perceives that her child is not getting. And for us to be able to do this, I repeat, I have no children in the Petersburg Public School System, but people expect us to know. And they expect us to be able to give it to them in a way that the people who have children can address it with the right people. And so I thank you for this, I thank the team. You are truly magnificent, you got to be able to sell tickets for that going the road. The other concern that I have is that I'm with Ms. Wilson about the fact that, and it all boils down to money. We can't piecemeal it, if you're gonna go for it, you got to go for the whole deal. You can't pick and choose what's gonna be convenient financially. And so therefore, you must give the people the entire program. You cannot leave out pieces that you think they can survive without, because everything is linked. Everything has checks and balances, and all of it has to be in place. So if it comes down to money, it's a sacrifice of, do you wanna sell the children for the sacrifice? Or you wanna just say, let's not lie about it and say we won't do it?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mickens. Anyone else from the audience? Okay, Mr. Miles, thirty seconds.
Now, this is to you and Mr. Fowler.
Dr. Fowler?
Dr. Fowler, sorry. Well, anyway, when I first came on the board, Mr. Lundey was very passionate about the reading program that we had just selected. And I didn't know much about the program, and everybody was excited, just like they're excited about Amplify tonight. Okay, what I was disappointed about when we, three years ago, was we selected this reading program, but nobody can tell me why the certified program before didn't work. Okay, here we are going to another reading program. And we need to know, when we select these things and get all excited, what we need to do differently, because, why, the last one that was... Because why the last one that was certified didn't work? How can we put ourselves more into it to make this one work? Because the thing is that, you know, in the world, when you have something that you believe gonna work, you find out why. And it doesn't work, you need to know why it didn't work. Because of the nail, a shoe was lost. Because of the shoe, a horse was lost. Because of the horse, a charge was lost. Because of the charge, the battle was lost. Because the battle was lost, the war was lost. Because the war was lost, a kingdom was lost. That's the charge of the light brigade. The English, the um the British government investigated to see why they lost. And it came down to somebody didn't put a nail in a horseshoe that led to charge. We loo- we are losing and nobody can tell me why we lost because we so quick to change without doing the research and saying, hey, how can we do this to make sure it gonna work next time? So the thing is that, now, I'm just, I haven't even been on the board four years. And we're getting excited again about another certified program and you're gonna tell me why it's gonna work. And you can't tell me why the last one didn't work. Because that was a certified program too. And I'm addressing the, not you, I'm addressing the board. Because we gotta demand more when it comes to defining, I mean, um, give giving us results and and reasons why. The thing, you cannot correct anything unless you know exactly you did the right research to get to 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 get down to the bottom of it. And the thing is that, here we are going to another one. Every program that anybody ever brought to this board was top-notch certified. And what Mr. London was saying, hey, these kids need to know how to read. And he's passionate about that. My big thing was STEM. So when we move forward, it's hard for me to get excited about any team that's not willing to do everything possible to inconvenience themselves, to get down to the bottom uh for each individual student, for each individual teacher, because it's not gonna be the same. And if we're not doing that individualize, we're not gonna individualize these programs for each individual. Then it's not gonna work for everybody. So the thing is that, no, I'm not excited, but I want to move forward. But we got to do it. I want to see people start inconvenience themselves, get this thing done and make sure it happen. Because it's not gonna happen until we really individualize it for each individual. Everything is, everyone is different.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Um, I'm I'm gonna make a comment and this will be the last comment. The reason why we don't get results on the programs is because we can't keep people in positions long enough because of the way they're treated. So until we treat our employees right, then we can get the results.
And I'm glad you said that.
Because the last person we had left, so that's why we didn't get the results.
One person?
One person, right. Who who was over top of that program and it was called Waterford.
So that show you we don't have no contingency?
Thank you. Next, we next we're gonna move on to G five G.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna ask Assistant Director of SPED, Danny Cusolo, to come up. Uh, Mr. Dr. Manson's out tonight. He's gonna present the local special special education annual plan application and report twenty twenty-four.
Chairman Pritchett, Vice Chairman Pierce, all the members of the board, uh Acting Superintendent Dr. Farley, other community members that are participating today virtually and in person. As Dr. Farley stated, I'm here today in absence of Dr. Manson and I will present our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five uh special education annual plan. Next slide, please. Tonight, I'll go over an overview of the actual plan itself, where I'll discuss the purpose of the grant, the application process, the allowable use of funds, the allocation of funds, and the grant-supported programs. Next slide. So as far as the purpose of the grant, the grant is to ensure that the school divisions and state-operated programs maintain the current policies and procedures. In supporting documentation to demonstrate compliance with the federal and state regulations governing the provisions of special education and related services licensure and accreditation. The completion of the requirement certifications and assurance sections of annual plan itself and part B flow-through will verify the adherence to the requirements of IDEA and federal and state regulations and the Virginia State uh and the Virginia Special Education Regulations. Next slide, please. So there's steps that we must take as a department for the grant application process that I will kind of go into detail with you. First, it starts with our December one child count. As of December one, we identified that there are four hundred and sixty-four students with disabilities that have been identified. The next step in this process is the maintenance of effort, which is completed by our finance department that uh go through the submission and approval process. The next step in this process is to present the annual plan to our local SEAC committee, which did take place in April twenty-second. And then, of course, this is the last step of May first, as far as presenting the annual plan uh to the school board. Next slide, please. So when we have the discussion of what those allowable use of funds are. So their employee benefits, those personnel services, those purchase services, other services, materials and supplies, internal services, and capital outlay. So if I go back to number two to really talk about purchase services, that could be services for occupational therapy, physical therapy. Also, if you look at our transitional occupational um services well and and assistive technology. Uh, when you think of capital outlay, that could be used for access for students with disabilities to improve uh ramp or or student that requires uh mobility devices or dynamic seating um for those students with disabilities that are receiving services in the comprehensive setting. Next slide, please. As far as the allocation of funds, the award year for twenty twenty-five for our department is roughly one point two million dollars. Uh, thirty-two thousand dollars of that, uh approximately thirty-two thousand dollars of that money is allocated for our preschool. Uh, as far as the flow-through itself, which is the majority of the money that does go to our employee benefits and personnel services, uh materials and supplies, and of course, the proportionate set aside, which I'll go into a little detail during the next slide. Next slide, please. So as far as the allocation of to support the child fine during the summer months, this is what the events that we hold for at the the preschool um intake team as well as throughout the community, whether it's in a different ward or if it's at the school board itself and uh for materials and supplies and that that part of the grant uh to support that is roughly five thousand dollars. As far as the majority of the grants, as I stated earlier, they're for salaries and benefits for our student, for our teachers and support staff who support students with disabilities. So the majority of the grants, as I said, go towards salaries and benefits. Uh, when I talked about the proportionate set aside, this right here is for students that receive speech, occupational, and physical therapy. This is through our meaningful consultation process that we do with our private schools, our homeschool cohorts, and churches. These are for students who do not attend Petersburg Public Schools but do have a desire to utilize those uh resources and services that may require speech, uh occupational or physical uh therapy services. This amount comes from the calculation as if the school uh uh from a formula that we use to read O E. And then the money is used to uh provide those families or cohorts or private schools with resources, the salaries of the folks that may leave and provide those services to tho- to those students. Um, we do currently this year have um with their, we've identified twelve total students in the city of Petersburg that are uh have been identified that are in a homeschool cohort, a private school, or or a church cohort um that are identified as students with disabilities. However, only two of them were the parents agreed to to take advantage of those services. So we may not also, we may not every year spend the allotted amount of money. However, that money uh overflows until the next year. And then after the two years, if it is not spent on that, it goes back into the grant itself. And then we could use it on other support services and resources for our students with disabilities. Next slide, please. Uh, la- uh, lastly, I would like to um to say is that the the annual plan process for itself is a a comprehensive overview of what we'll, what we're doing for our students with disabilities. Um, and and I think this entire process with Dr. Manson will would uh back me on this is it's for us to remain transparent and show how we are using the appropriate funds to make sure our students are receiving the best possible services in Petersburg. Uh, with that being said, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cusolo. Any questions of Mr. Miles? Any questions of Mr. Pierce? Any questions? Ms. Proctor, Ms. Nguyen? Thank you for all you do. Also, you, Dr. Manson, your team, because I get calls from parents all the time about services that supposedly the kids are not seeing. I give you other calls. You follow through and the parents do. Thank you also for doing your job by following through and checking up to making to make sure that their kids receive the services that they should be receiving as far as testing or physical therapy, anything like their speech. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Oh, any questions from the audience? You're safe.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're gonna move to our public comment period. Any one for public, I think y'all, y'all have talked enough, right? I'm gonna read one public comment period that came in. If I don't, I'm gonna get a phone call about this. Okay, this public comment P um is from Mr. Linwood Christian. Mr. Pritchett, would you be so kind to read this for me tonight and enter it into the record? My address first and foremost is six thirty-three West Washington Street, Petersburg, Virginia. Good evening, Mr. Pritchett, members of the school board, superintendent. My name is Linwood Christian and I am going to keep it short, sweet, and to the point. Stop laughing, Mr. Pritchett and Mr. London. I know it's a shock. One thing I am going to continue to say is I have always said first and foremost, foremost, when you when you're allotting your money, please make sure to look out and look up for our teachers. It is unfortunate that our city council did not see favor to match the two percent of the state funding that was given so that our teachers could get it raised. But I hope that you all will take care of our teachers. I am also going to say to each of you and every school board member to the administration, one of the best ways to make sure that our money are not spent on wisely. Wisely? I'm sorry, he has on wisely. Okay, unwisely. Please sit down with those teachers and representative and the P E A and come to a workable resolution as far as collective bargaining. So whatever you do for the school system, support staff, drivers, cafeteria workers, office staff, our maintenance workers. Do all you can do to show them your appreciation, that you appreciate them, by looking out for them in this budget. You have a lot of administrators that really should not be making the salary that they are. And I think if you look, you look into that, you will know who is doing their job and who is not doing their job. That will save you some money as well as so that it could put, it could be put to good use. I thank you as always for trusting, for you trusting all to make the best decisions, not what others think are best decisions. And that's for Mr. Christian. And Mr. Christian, wait, he would have said this much better than he wrote it, but everything in here, Mr. Christian would have said this. He would have. I should have read over before I read it. But that's for Mr. Christian, um, so that will go into the record. But thank you all for for coming out tonight. We are not finished. We're gonna move on next to our action item. Dr. Farley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first uh action item is to recognize Teacher Appreciation Week twenty twenty-four with a proclamation. That's not the proclamation. That's that's being excited to celebrate our teachers. Teacher Appreciation Appreciation Week twenty twenty-four proclamation. Whereas teachers are the cornerstone of our education system, shaping the minds and futures of our students. And whereas their dedication, passion, and tireless commitment to nurturing young minds and fostering a love of learning are invaluable contributions to our society. And whereas teachers serve as mentors, role models, and guides, instilling knowledge, inspiring creativity, and empowering students to reach their full potential. And whereas during Teacher Appreciation Week, we recognize and celebrate the remarkable efforts and contributions of teachers in classrooms with Petersburg City Public Schools. And whereas we express our gratitude for their unwavering devotion to the betterment of our communities and the advancement of education for all. Now therefore, be resolved that the Petersburg City Public School Board do hereby proclaim May sixth to May tenth, twenty twenty-four is Teacher Appreciation Week. Let us honor and appreciate our teachers for their dedication, hard work, and profound impact on the lives of our students and the future of our society. Adopted this first day of May, twenty twenty-four. It's the Acting Superintendent's recommendation that the board approve the Teacher Appreciation Week twenty twenty-four proclamation.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Dan second. Mr. Pierce, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is uh Nurses Appreciation Week twenty twenty-four proclamation. And I'll give a woo-woo to the nurses too. Ms. Mason be signing autographs in the back of the room. Nurses Appreciation Week twenty twenty-four proclamation. Whereas nurses in the United States constitute our nation's nation's largest healthcare profession. And whereas the depth and breadth of the nursing profession meets the different and emerging healthcare needs of the Petersburg City Public Schools' population in a wide range of settings. And whereas Petersburg City Public Schools aim to maintain a safe educational learning environment. And whereas professional nursing is an indispensable component of the safety and quality of care of Petersburg City Public Schools. And whereas Petersburg City Public Schools nursing staff provide safe and high-quality healthcare services to all. And whereas, along with the American Nurses Association, the Petersburg City Public Schools has declared May sixth to the twelfth is Nurses Week with the theme, quote, nurses make the difference, with appreciation for nurses' unparalleled impact to healthcare to all students and staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the Petersburg City Public Schools honor the nurses who care for all of us and show our appreciation for the nursing staff, not just during this week, but at every opportunity throughout the year. Adopted this first day of May, twenty twenty-four. It's the Acting Superintendent's recommendation, the board approved, the Nurses Appreciation Week twenty twenty-four proclamation.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept? Moved by Mr. Pierce.
Second.
Second by Ms. Nguyen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item for action is School Lunch Hero Day twenty twenty-four proclamation. My last woo-woo for our childcare heroes. School Lunch Hero Day twenty twenty-four proclamation. Whereas nutritious meals at school are an essential part of the school day. And whereas the staff of Petersburg City Public Schools Nutrition Department are committed to providing healthful nutritious meals to Petersburg City children. And whereas the individuals who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support. And whereas the day of Friday, May third, twenty twenty-four, is School Hero Lunch Day. Now therefore, be resolved that the Petersburg City Schools Public uh Public Schools Board of Education celebrates and expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable employees and commends their good work on behalf of all Petersburg City children, not just this School Lunch Hero Day, but every school day throughout the year. Adopted this first day of May, twenty twenty-four. It is the Acting Superintendent's recommendation that the board approve the School Lunch Hero Day twenty twenty-four proclamation.
Thank you. Motion to accept.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Nguyen, second, Mr. Pierce. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E, I'm sorry, D.
Thank you. Next, policies for second read. It's the Acting Superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve policies BG slash GBD, GBC, GBC dash E two, GBD slash BG, GCBA, GCPD, and GDB as presented.
You stand getting an ax there. You heard the recommendations. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Dan second. Mr. Pierce, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, school attendance rezone. It's the Acting Superintendent's recommendation, the board suspends first read and approve the school attendance area rezone.
Thank you, sir. You heard the recommendations. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Proctor. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Nguyen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is VLA curriculum adoption. It's the Acting Superintendent's recommendation that the board suspends the first read and approve the VLA curriculum adoption.
Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Nguyen, second by Mr. Pierce. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, the local special special education annual plan application and report. It's the Acting Superintendent's recommendation that the board suspends the first read and approve the local special education annual plan part B flow-through application and report twenty twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pierce. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Proctor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is the twenty twenty-five budget in twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-nine project capital improvement plan.
Pardon? Draft. It should be draft. We should have put draft in there.
Draft?
Uh-huh. It's a draft, yeah.
We'll amend that to draft budget. It's the Acting Superintendent's recommendation that the board approve the draft twenty twenty-five budget in twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine draft projec- uh projected capital improvement plan.
Thank you. You've heard the recommendations. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Nguyen. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Pierce, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Gear Up Grant is next. It's the Acting Superintendent's recommendation that the board suspends the first read and approve the Gear Up Virginia twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-eight. and approve the Gear Up Virginia twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-eight Petersburg High School Implementation Plan Year, year four, twenty twenty, twenty-four to twenty twenty-five.
Heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Proctor, is there a second? Ms. Winn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, oh, and opposed, motion carries. Next we move to J, Mr. Dance?
The school board has requested to authorize the superintendent to award the contract to B W P and Associates through a purchase order in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars. The original proposal was a cost of twenty-four thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars with a negotiated reduction of five hundred and seventy-five dollars. This project consists of consulting services to assist the school board in a national search to find and select the most qualified candidate to serve as superintendent of Petersburg City Public Schools. As noted in the informal R F P number twenty-four dash double oh two issued on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, and receipt of proposal dated April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. And information contained therein to include all final negotiations conducted on May first, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Is there, is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pierce, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Proctor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next we move down to our information item. Our next school board meeting is May the fifteenth. And board members, you have the stick book here. Ms. Nelson has asked that you please review this before the fifteenth meeting. She's gonna go, she'll be going over the, she'll be going over all of this. So we'll probably put her up first on the agenda, but she's asking us to review this, um, because we have to vote on this for head start. Richmond has already gone through it, she's saying, so we're next. So remember.
Be the only thing on the agenda. Just kidding.
Okay, any reports, any committee reports? Any new business from board members? Nine, eight?
The only thing that I had to come up with, uh, help is that we need to do that health and wellness plan. Did we assign someone? Be the head of that committee, health and wellness committee?
Yeah, so we're leading it up with um, Patricia Johnson, who's our consultant. And the nurse, uh, Nurse Hamlin and Ms. Stokes and I are forming the committee and reaching out to, I'll, I'll lead the process. Uh, reaching out to constituents and there's required positions, uh, both within the school system and in the community, um, to come together to start that process.
Do you have any idea when um, when it'll be a conclusion date?
Um, well, we hoped, so there's a um, uh, internal process that we have to go through getting data from school administrators and from central office and measurements that we, we need to take to the committee before the committee can meet. So our target is definitely by June, if not before. So through the month of May, the committee, we're, the original committees, we're gonna set up um, a schedule of different events that need to happen, who needs to get involved. We're probably looking at like the June fifteenth range to take before the board.
And please include shared on that. That's the committee that I'm on, so we can have some input also.
Yep.
For school health and.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Board members, um, remember next Friday, um, Dr. Patello with the president of V S B A will be here and we, he will be doing a tour of Petersburg. We will be at around nine fifteen, we will go over to Westview Early Childhood Center over there for a tour. We will leave there and go to Petersburg High South Wing to C T E, and we will leave there and go to Richard Bland. And we will end our tour at Richard Bland. Richard Bland is asking, they are gonna provide lunch, so they want to know which, how many board members are planning to attend, so they can prepare lunch for enough individuals who plan to attend.
Chair, that's on the tenth, right?
That's the tenth, next Friday.
I'll be there. But my, my question is, in initially that morning, where are we meeting?
We're gonna be here at Central Office and Dr. Farley, we're gonna need to take a van. Yeah, rather than everyone driving behind each other, we can take a van.
Do you wanna know now who going?
Yes, uh-huh, you can let Ms. Williams know. Ms. Winn says she's going.
I got it. And I'm going.
I don't think I'm gonna.
Okay.
Uh, I'm gonna plan, I'm planning, I'm planning for the ten.
Oh, yeah, Dr. Farley. Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no other new business, I think I got everything right. No other new business? Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mr. Miles, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Um, Dance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And Ms. Ms. Mickens, Ms. Um, Curtis, Ms. Mason, Ms. Wilson, I sent you all both resolutions. I sent it to your email just now.